Good morning, everyone. Nice to see almost full house this morning. We apologize for the brief delay with technical difficulties. This, the Wednesday, February 6th, 2019, meeting of the NAGS Headboard of Commissioners will come to order. If you will, please join me in a brief moment of silence. And now if you will stand as you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda and a motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda are recognitions. Cliff?
Good morning. It's my pleasure to introduce to you and to welcome to the town James Philip Webster, Phil Webster, or Chief Webster, depending on how you're being addressed moving forward from here. But Chief Webster will be taking over our police department. He comes to us by way of north, Myrtle Beach. I want to make emphasis on the north. We did not hire someone from Myrtle Beach. He's from north Myrtle Beach. He has a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice from the University of South Carolina and a master of science in criminal justice from the University of Louisville. He served in the United States Marine Corps from 1982 to 1986 where he achieved the rank of corporal and his primary marine specialty was rifleman. He received a number of service awards, including the Meritus Mass, Humanitarian Service Medal, Naval Unit Commendation, and the Good Conduct Medal. As I said, he retired as the police chief from North Myrtle Beach with 25 years of law enforcement. He worked his way up, starting in 1992, from a public safety officer, held positions of corporal, sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. The last three and a half is chief. He's obviously too young to be retired and so we're very thankful that he's still got the enthusiasm and the desire and the passion for policing. He did work one year with the private security as an operations manager, but quickly realized that his passion is municipal government, municipal policing. There's some reoccurring themes that kept coming up through his background investigation and they were evident during his interview process. And those are he strong belief in mentoring his officers, honest, reliable, extremely dependable, never heard a negative remark, very positive, great relations in the community, gets along well with everyone, hands-on manager. It's obvious he has the knowledge and skills and abilities to do this job, but I also think he has a passion for the job. I think he's going to be a good fit with our community because he does believe in community policing. He's extremely, we're extremely fortunate to have him, but he's also extremely fortunate that he's got the police department that he does, large part due to retirement of Chief Brinkley and what a great standard he set and that's been carried on by the administration, all the men and women. Deputy Chief Hale and Lieutenant Montgomery have done an excellent job. So you're inheriting an awesome group of men and women, which I'm very thankful for. It's also fitting that Dean Sweeney is here today because Chief Webster's wife is a professor at Community College in Horry Georgetown Community College. So I'm sure before you get to leave town, there'll be a conversation. We're hoping to get Kelly, his wife Kelly, here just at the latest in May and we look forward to having her here and getting her into the community. He's got two kids, a son and a daughter. The son's an aspiring police officer. It looks like he's going to end up in Savannah as a police officer. Daughter's in the restaurant business down in north Myrtle Beach. He's a surfer. He's a runner. So I think he's going to fit in real good with us. I do want to invite the board, everyone here and everyone in the community on Wednesday, the 13th, at Wave Riders, Wednesday, February 13th, at Wave Riders, we'll have a meet and greet. I believe your wife's going to be able to be here.
Not at Wave Riders.
Okay.
I think that's on Monday.
Okay. Good deal. So that's Wednesday, the 13th, 3:30 to 5:30. Hope everyone can come without any more ado. Meet your chief.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cliff. Appreciate that. And I would like to take this opportunity to express the board's appreciation to Deputy Chief Hale for taking over the department. It's hard to step into somebody's really big shoes and Kevin Brinkley left some big shoes to fill and we really appreciate you stepping in as you did and carrying the department forward and now putting it in a good hand. So thank you very much. Cliff?
Yes, sir. We have the Public Works Director Ralph Burrell will introduce to you a new employee in the Water Distribution Department.
Good morning, Mayor. Commissioners, it's my privilege this morning to introduce you to Ray Scott. Ray, as the manager said, he just started with Water Distribution Department. Ray was born in Salvo. His family moved to Kill Devil Hills when he was about four years old. He attended First Flight Elementary, graduated from Manio High School, lives now over in PowerPoint with his wife Bridgette. He enjoys woodworking, working on his house, and gaming. So without any further ado, Ray Scott.
Great. Thank you.
That's a good thing he isn't going to ask me about it.
Congratulations. Thank you. Welcome.
Good luck to you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next, Mr. Mayor, we'll have interim chief Shane Hyde come forward to introduce two new firefighters.
Good morning, Mayor. Commissioners, how are you all doing this morning?
Morning.
Today, I would like to introduce to you one of our new firefighters, Guy Crocker. Guy comes to us, he originally started as a firefighter in the city of Suffolk, Virginia. He decided at some point to move to the town of Kill Devil Hills with his wife Lauren. So in an effort to get closer to here, Guy actually went to work for the Kerr-Tuck County Fire and EMS, but still wanted to get closer, saw that we had the job open and so of course we were able to get him away from them. Guy is certified as a firefighter two, a driver operator, and an EMT. And of course, on his days off, he decided to move here because he likes to serve. And he's actually got a business on the side where he makes handmade furniture, so we're hoping to use some of his skills in the Friday Department of the Town. Guy, congratulations and welcome to the NAGS Head family.
Right.
If I may, our next new firefighter is firefighter James Phillips. James was born and raised here and is a resident of Collington. James, also today, his girlfriend Ally and daughter Harper are with us, as well as his mom and dad. Firefighting, of course, is in his blood. His dad was a firefighter or is a firefighter. He's been a volunteer firefighter with the Collington Fire Department since 2015 and he comes to us as a firefighter two and an EMT. Of course, on his days off, he enjoys a little bit of fishing, a little bit of hunting, and of course spending time with his family. So we hope for a long future with him as well and congratulations, James.
Next, Mr. Mayor, we'll have deputy chief Hale come up to recognize Sergeant Nathaniel Tadlock on his advanced certification.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to come before you today to recognize Sergeant Nathaniel Tadlock for his recent attainment of the North Carolina Training and Standards Commission Advanced Certification Award. His wife Vanessa and son Evan is here today and I believe Evan had a little boo-boo yesterday so he's sitting over there, still got a smile on his face at school with an individual on the playground, I believe. This award is the highest an officer can obtain through the Commission's Professional Certificate Program, which was put together through the North Carolina General Statute Chapter 17(c), which is comprised of 34 criminal justice professionals from across the state. These professionals establish a minimum requirements of employment, training, and retention standards for the state's criminal justice officers. I'd like to read to you the letter that was sent to me after the commission approved his application packet, if I can get through the small print here. In order to recognize the level of competence of law enforcement officers serving governmental agencies within the state, to foster increased interest in college education and professional law enforcement training programs, and to attract highly qualified individuals into a law enforcement career, the Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission established the Law Enforcement Officers Professional Certificate Program. This program is a method by which dedicated officers may receive recognition for education, professional training, and on-the-job experience. In order to receive this award, officers must acquire a combination of education and training points, along with the years of full-time law enforcement experience. After their examining Sergeant Tadlock's credentials, the Commission unanimously approved the issuance of this award to him. It is my pleasure to congratulate you on the attainment of this most significant award. Your dedication to the chosen profession is evidenced by the fact that you are one of a very select group of officers to receive this award. Congratulations, Cliff. This was signed by all members of the Commission and also the Attorney General. It was presented to him and it was framed here. We got it framed about a month ago when it came in and just had time to get him here to the board to recognize it for this chief.
Excellent. Wonderful.
Deputy chief's going to stay right there and recognize Police Lieutenant Chris Montgomery on his 20 years of service to the town.
Again, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, it's my pleasure to be here before you today to recognize Lieutenant Chris Montgomery for his 20 years of service with the town. Chris came to NAGS Head after working two years with the Fairfield Police Department in Connecticut. He started here out as a patrol officer and has worked his way up through the ranks in patrol and he's also served as a sergeant over our Criminal Investigation Division. Chris was promoted to lieutenant in 2016. Over the patrol division, he's been a great asset to our department. Chris has a wealth of knowledge that he brings to us and he is not one that doesn't put it to use. He is one of our general instructors, as well as he specializes in firearms and rapid deployment for the department. Chris also handles all of our in-service training and makes sure that those records are in strategic order for the annual audit that is completed by the Training and Standards Commission. As lieutenant, he is also not exempt from regular police duties, as he must also answer calls and work shifts as a police officer as well. In his free time, Chris enjoys traveling to watch his daughter play soccer and spending time with his family on the boat. Chris, congratulations for your 20 years of service and I appreciate all you do for the town.
Robert, if I can ask Chris to stay up, I'm going to take the liberty of getting a picture with my old neighbor.
Finally, Mr. Mayor, bring the interim chief Hyde back up for the recognition of a retirement of Captain John Harris.
Good morning, once again. It's my pleasure to come to you today to speak about fire captain John Harris. John, of course, came to us in January of 1998, spending almost nearly 20 years with the town. Most definitely an asset to the department and a great friend of mine. We were both promoted to fire captain on the same day and remained on shift together for the entire time until I got promoted to deputy chief. We're kind of surprised we were able to get him in here today. Of course, he rode his Harley, which I think he and Dee are enjoying a lot more of now and probably have a lot more camping trips planned. But John helped us out in many ways while he was here. He was a training officer, he was a fire inspector, he was a fire instructor, but most of all, probably a great leader to his shift and we really appreciate that. I think it's a testament, you know, a lot of the guys that served under him are here today, as well as the police officers that spent a lot of time with him. So John, we really thank you for that. But again, thank you for making the retirement and thank you for enjoying and thank you for coming back. But again, kickback and retire, Dee couldn't be here with us today, but I know our hearts with you and our hearts with her. So John, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'd like to invite the board to come up, if they would, and let's get a picture. They're retirees. Okay. The next item on the agenda are presentations.
First up, we asked College of Admiral Dean Tim Sweeney to give us an update on the College of the Admiral. The State of the Union of the College of the Admiral.
You hit it right on the nose there, Cliff. Thank you, Cliff. Mayor Calhoun, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about the campus here in Dare, on the Roanoke Island campus. COA is really expanding and we're trying to keep up with the new economy, as you can see. And I arrived here in 2014 and one of my main goals was to really connect with the high schools. I'm a retired high school principal and we felt that we weren't really connected to the high schools here from Cape Patteras all the way up to First Flight, of course, Manio. When I arrived in 2014, we had approximately 24 high school students taking dual-enroll classes. Today, we have 246 students since 2014.
Wow.
Just last year, we had 166 high school students. This year, it's 246. So we are growing and of course, you're all aware that we're getting prepared, hopefully in the next couple of years, to have a new campus and to serve even our students even, you know, further with the new technology and the new campus that will help us in that area. What I am doing is trying to go around to all the towns, Rotary Clubs, PTAs, to let them know about the campus. The campus has grown in the last four years and we want the community to know about these programs that we have. This little campus, I call it the little campus I can. We have a tremendous economic impact right here in Dare County. This study was done in 2016, it's a little old, but the impact of this campus alone brings in approximately $40 million total impact. And you're talking about salaries, you're talking about taxes, you're talking about alumnis staying here with jobs, et cetera. And that's my main goal, is to help our community get employment and to help our industry fulfill the skill levels that they need. And we have partnered with everybody from real estate to the restaurants, to the HVAC companies, to the electricians, et cetera. And as you all know, there's a tremendous need for the skill level. When I first started out with these different programs, if you could see up there, we basically went after the adult population, the population that is unemployed, or those that were interested in basically changing their employment. So we started the Hospitality Leadership Program. We offered HVAC technology in the daytime. We just currently offer marine diesel engine repair, just started two weeks ago. We've always had the Professional Jewelry Program, which I'll touch upon a little bit. Welding technology during the daytime. We've also had Certified Nursing Chief, who's still here, that is a very popular class here as far as students taking it and then going into the nursing field. So I will be hooking up with your lovely wife and talk to her about the nursing program. Of course, BLAT, Basic Law Enforcement. Getting back to the associate's degree, these are the degrees that you can get on our campus. Those two-year degrees are, you can matriculate right into a four-year college. There's an agreement between all of our universities and I have to tell you this, we should be very proud of our community, I know I am. I'm proud of our school division here, the Dare County Schools. Eighty-five percent of our students that come to this Dare campus is in the college transfer program. Out of that eighty-five percent, all of them go on to a four-year university. Ninety-four percent of them graduate. The national statistics is in the seventies. The state is in the low eighties and right here on our own campus, it's ninety-four. I attribute that to our educational system, the students that we get, the families, and the support that they give to their children. And also, I have to give a lot of credit to our campus instructors and our professors because they really work hard in working with the students one-on-one. This is the message I get out to the college transfer folks. If you can see what the price is to go to a four-year college, four years per year, nineteen thousand, even if you take out the room and board, it's still very expensive as you can see the total there, $2,500 to go to a community college here. This community is so strong in that a student can actually get their two-year associate's degree for free. And every place I go, I try to emphasize the fact that, you know what, if you don't listen to anything Dean Sweeney says today, walk out of this room and say, you know what, they can get education for free, the word F-R-E-E. I tell it to our kids all the time, I tell it to our parents. You can get a two-year associate's degree with scholarships by the Outer Banks Community Foundation. The Outer Banks Community Foundation supports all of these programs and will give scholarships. Right now, Commissioner Woodard and I are in discussion and trying to raise enough money, and I'm letting this out early, but to have every high school student that graduates from Dare County Schools, if they want to come to our campus, their campus, to get associate's degree, we'll give them a college scholarship free. That's kind of continuing the dual enrollment that we have. Students can go as now sophomores, juniors, and seniors and get their dual-enrolled classes and get 60 credits, 60 credits as associate's degree. Some get 30, they have a year behind them. Then they can come to our campus the following year, get the scholarship for two years, have a free education, and then they go on to get their Pell Grant or scholarships to East Carolina, NC State, Chapel Hill, wherever they might want to go. That's really important for us to get out to the community. Turning to CONEd, the Career and Technical Pathways. After I arrived here in 2014 and we had the dual enrollment in place, I turned my attention to the technical field, the trades, and talking to the Outer Banks Builders Foundation, the electricians, the HVAC, welders. They all are starving for skilled labor. So my goal was to establish a career pathway for these students and adults. My first year, I found out that everybody is working, the economy's doing very well. So my focus now is on high school students. To do dual enrollment, you have to have a 3.0 GPA. As a retired high school principal, I said to myself, what about the 2.0? What about that student that really just, you know, wants to work with their hands? What I did is I got my staff together, got with Artie Till and John Farley, and we all talked about banding together and petitioned the state of North Carolina's Educational Systems Office, 58 Community College, and said, why not dual enrollment for these areas here as you look up? So we petitioned that those students, if the school division would agree to recruit those high school students for these trades, and they had to send letters into the state. We then in turn went to the industry and proved that they would be hiring them and they'll do apprenticeships. As a result, we're the first campus, first college, to have what we call a state-certified hospitality leadership program. What does that mean? That means that any high school student can take that program, that CONEd classes, and get a state certification while they're in high school, meaning this, when they graduate, they have a hospitality leadership certification. The same thing we have set up for the HVAC technology, the same thing we have set up for welding technology. Those three areas are the first in the state to move towards dual enrollment, towards the trades. So we got the academics, that's been strong in North Carolina for a long time, but the trades now, and that's the new economy, and I'm really happy and pleased that the state is looking at that now across all 58 community colleges to allow the 2.0 student to get dual enrollment and to get back into the workforce when they graduate from high school. So we're real proud of that fact. This here is the Hospitality Leadership Program. It's not like a 16-week class. If you look on the bottom there, if you can see it, that is the baseline that's been developed by the industry here, the Outer Banks. It's geared towards our community and our community's needs. It's not necessarily geared towards Atlantic City or Las Vegas or anyplace else. It's our community needs and a student will take 96 hours and go up that career ladder. Now people are asking me about, you know, why, you know, you're being a college, but we don't stop there, just at the trades. I want the trades to continue into an associate's degree in business, onto either East Carolina University or North Carolina Wesleyan, which are right here in our backyard. North Carolina Wesleyan's on our campus, students can continue to get their four-year degree. And I've been working with Reed Corbett, the dean of East Carolina University, and Reed and I are going to start a hospitality leadership four-year degree from East Carolina University. Now that could be through distance learning, it could be through WebEx, it could be through face-to-face hybrid, but we're going to figure that out in the next three or four years to make that a reality. So a student doesn't really actually go and never go to college and never leave Dare County and that's the exciting part of that. This is a hospitality video. Due to time, I'm not going to show this video, but it's on our webpage, but that's a student that went through the program, works for Outer Banks Blue, is now up in reservations and she's moved up already as far as, you know, mobility and leadership. This is from Brian McDonald. Brian and I have partnered with other companies and Brian is now doing internships and apprenticeships with- As a result, we're the first campus, first college, to have what we call a state-certified Hospitality Leadership Program. What does that mean? That means that any high school student can take that program, that CONED classes, and get a state certification while they're in high school. Meaning this, when they graduate, they have a Hospitality Leadership Certification. The same thing we have set up for the HVAC technology, the same thing we have set up for welding technology. Those three areas are the first in the state to move towards dual enrollment, towards the trades. So we got the academics, that's been strong in North Carolina for a long time, but the trades now, and that's the new economy. And I'm really happy and pleased that the state is looking at that now across all fifty-eight community colleges to allow the 2.0 student to get dual enrollment and to get back into the workforce when they graduate from high school. So we're real proud of that fact. This here is the Hospitality Leadership Program. It's not like a sixteen-week class. If you look on the bottom there, if you can see it, that is the baseline that's been developed by the industry here, the Outer Banks. It's geared towards our community and our community's needs. It's not necessarily geared towards Atlantic City or Las Vegas or anyplace else. It's our community needs. And a student will take ninety-six hours and go up that career ladder. Now, people are asking me about, you know, why, you know, you're being a college, but we don't stop there, just at the trades. I want the trades to continue into an Associate's Degree in Business, on to either East Carolina University or North Carolina Wesleyan, which are right here in our backyard. North Carolina Wesleyan's on our campus, students can continue to get their four-year degree. And I've been working with Reed Corbett, the dean of East Carolina University, and Reed and I are going to start a Hospitality Leadership Four-Year Degree from East Carolina University. Now, that could be through distance learning, it could be through WebEx, it could be through face-to-face hybrid, but we're going to figure that out in the next three or four years to make that a reality. So a student doesn't really actually go and never, go to college and never leave Dare County, and that's the exciting part of that. This is a hospitality video. Due to time, I'm not going to show this video, but it's on our webpage, but that's a student that went through the program, works for Outer Banks Blue, is now up in reservations, and she's moved up already as far as, you know, mobility and leadership. This is from Brian McDonald. Brian and I have partnered with other companies, and Brian is now doing internships and apprenticeships with the HVAC dual-Enroll High School Students. It's a one-year program. They start with us in the afternoon from one o'clock to four, and then on Fridays they'll, or Saturdays, they go out with a technician to learn it onsite. These students will graduate from high school with a certification, and the industry, and the HVAC industry, has promised that they'll hire our young people when they get out of high school. And you can see Brian tries to lure them because of the salary up there, that's always a hook for our students to get an interest. Welding technology is a real neat story here. About two years ago, Jed Dixon and I started to work about the needs of the Ferry Division as far as welders, chippers, painters, electricians, and one of the things he really needed was the welders. Well, we started two years ago, and we worked with the school division, and we produced a strong welding program. We have about twelve students per year taking this, we only have about twelve booths at this time, just to service those students. But Jed and I were finding a problem, because we started an apprenticeship, paid apprenticeship, and they would go over there on Fridays and work. And the students were doing really well, but the Ferry Division couldn't hire them. And Jed and I were going crazy, we said, what do you mean you're not going to hire them? Well, the Department of Transportation has a rule that you have to have three years of experience before you can be hired by the Department of Transportation. Well, Jed and I just kind of just shook our heads then, because our students were going to Hampton Roads, some were going to the Gulf of Mexico, they were going, you know, away from our area. Meanwhile, Jed and the Ferry Division did not have the welders they needed. We got together with the State Systems Office, we got together with the Department of Transportation out of Raleigh, got eight community colleges up and down the coast from Cape Fear, we all met in the Ferry Division, and we talked about our students graduating, and the other community colleges wanted to follow our model here. So that little old campus in Roanoke Island is leading the way for the state of North Carolina and the colleges to say, look, we can do welding, and paid apprenticeships, paying you while you're going to school. And in the Department of Transportation, we told them, you need to change. You need to change those three years of, you know, experience and hire our graduates. So that is in Raleigh right now, and hopefully that will be changed this coming year. So that was a kind of a neat story. And let me just show you this video here, because this video tells it better than I can as a speaker, that's for sure. This is our children.
It's been a great partnership. We're so thankful to have these students onboard. We currently have four welders that are students at the school who are working every day at our facility here in Mans Harbor. Welding is a trade that is a very high-demand trade, and we always struggle to find the skilled talent, and the school has been able to provide a very good link for us to that talent here.
With this partnership set up as like an intern apprenticeship, they can go in and work whatever hours they're not in school. It could be, they could work four hours a week, or they could work twenty hours a week. It has given them a real-life scenario, welding, training, that they're actually welding the beams in all kinds of different positions, they're dealing with different types of configurations of joints, and this is training them, and it just makes them more valuable for them to go and pursue their career, because welding is not just a job, it's a career.
The Ferry Division works on all the ships throughout North Carolina, and they come in and they'll get their services. If they need fixing in the hull, we'll do that. If they need engine work, they do that, and paint, all that stuff. It helps us a lot, because it pays us to do it, so we can put that money back into our education, and it gives us real-life experience that big-time employers would like, like Newport News or other bigger shipyards of that nature.
The welding program here is offering me great experience. They tell us who we're shadowing and what we're doing, and then they set us up and they watch us as we assist. We've gotten to weld on things out there, and of course, the foreman will come around and look at everybody's work and speak to each of us separately.
We work when we don't have classes. So, for example, in the summer, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, then we go over there, work full days Thursday and Friday. I like the hands-on part, but I like putting things together and seeing them come together.
American Welding Society still says there's over 400,000 welding jobs open in the United States at this time, and we get emails from the Tidewater area that there's over 17,000. And naturally, we can't create one overnight. It does take time and training. If you're interested in welding, if you're a high school student, check into with your guidance counselor. They have dual enrollment programs we have here. You gain college credit at the same time that you gain your high school credit. We'd love to have you come by and check out some of our open houses.
We're hoping to take this partnership and grow it. The school is in our own backyard here, and it gives us a lot of opportunity to seek the skilled talent that we really need. Our shipyard is a great job for these students here, it provides them long-term employment, and we really hope to be able to leverage some of their talent and turn it into something a little more long-term.
You can see where the high school students are just blown away by this. And I can't, I mean, I go there every day just to see them and see the smile on their faces, because they're getting paid and making a pretty good wage, and they're ready to go to work in the work world. The second class here is Professional Craft Jewelry. I wanted to talk a little bit about this, because this is only two programs in the state of North Carolina, up in Asheville and here in the Outer Banks. This program is constantly on the state, what we call, suspension list. And I worry about it, because the state basically tells us that if we're not breaking even, and if you're losing money in a program, you need to suspend it. We've been on a suspension list at least once, and I am really trying to push, and that's why I'm here too mainly, is to tell the community about this program, because a lot of our folks here take this course and they have a second job, or they could even go into the galleries and work there. Most of the students that graduate from this program start their own online business, and it's quite profitable. I went to a All Saints and Southern Shores Episcopal Church, and they had a craft show right around Christmas. I'm walking through there, it must have been about 200 vendors, and there was at least fifteen to sixteen of them that graduated from this program, who were just yelling, hey, Dean Sweeney, Dean Sweeney! I was just really pleased to see them all. But this is a great program, it's only a year program and you can get a certificate. This is the new program, Marine Diesel Repair, we just started that two weeks ago, it's over in Mans Harbor. We have eight students that signed up for that, and all eight students, the tuition was about $400 with the book, and all are going for free because of the Outer Banks Community Foundation. So think about that. You have folks out there that will get jobs right away, one year of this class, and they're promised a position in the industry here. Right now, all eight have been promised jobs, if they complete the class. So that was really exciting. I wanted to touch upon international students a little bit. This is a video, I'm not going to show it because of time, but it's, all these videos are located on our webpage, if you'd like to take a look at them. There's a little bit of a crisis right now across our country with international students. With everything that's going on with the Homeland Security and immigration rules and regulations and procedures changing, we average about 130 international students every year that enroll to our campus, just our campus. In the last two years, it's down to 59. So a lot of the students from our international community are either being delayed their visa or they're being sent back to their home country to get a second visa, or a new visa, I should say, not a second one, a new one. And it's been a problem for them getting back into our country. And the word is out, because right now, I'll tell you a story, we're doing a lot of research. Homeland Security, when we work with them and we ask them questions to help our international students, there's a lot of unanswered questions, they don't know, they can't answer for us. So the students are staying in limbo. Right now, currently, we have thirty students here in Dare County sitting, waiting to get into our school because of the delays as far as approval. It's getting better, as they, Homeland Security learns the regulations and rules, it's getting much better. As a result, though, we found out that a lot of them are turning and going to Canada. Canada has been recruiting international students, and they were saying, we were reading an article the other day, that their benchmark was so many international students for their universities and their community colleges. They wanted to hit that benchmark, whatever it was, I couldn't remember it, but in the year 2025. So they were giving themselves a good six years to reach their benchmark. Canada has reached that benchmark this year. They don't need to wait till 2025. A lot of the international students are going to Canada and Australia. This has hurt our enrollment somewhat. We dropped in our adult enrollment, but we've gone up in our high school enrollment. So we're to push, our enrollment's steady. But it is something that I think the community should know about, I think it's going to also affect the J1s that come here to work too. But what we can do about it is just continue to work with Homeland Security and to support our students as much as possible. The last class I want to talk to you about is, this is the last slide, I promise you. This is our drone class. This was produced by the drone students, they produced this, the class produced this for just marketing tool for me. We have had police departments take this class, roofing companies, real estate folks, it's booked all the time, and this is just a, whoops, sorry, can you go back to that number? Kind of hit the wrong button there. It's just the last slide. Yeah, just play that video here. This is what they produce, it's kind of the beauty of our campus and our area. So in conclusion, the future of this campus is bright. It's a new facility that we're going to receive hopefully in two or three years. The current building that I reside in, right behind CBS and Russell Twiford, we are going to keep that campus, but we're going to go ahead and work with the school division to create an early college. So we will have like a JP Napp Early College within two or three years, which will service about 100 to 150 students. We'll also have on our campus there, the, we're calling it now the Dare Campus, with the students that are alternative program, they are doing really well there, and we're just expanding our population in dual enrollment through the CONED portion. I wanted you all to be aware of where we're going, and I thank you, I know it's a long videos there, but I just wanted to get a feel for what we're trying to do. I need your support as, you know, citizens and to get the word out, because this little campus is making things happen, you know, here in the state of North Carolina, in this community. So thank you for having me, Mayor.
Thank you, Dean Sweeney.
Renee, thank you for helping me. Renee, I need to acknowledge Renee Kern TV, she's on that board, and she's been terrific as the chairperson in supporting all these videos that we produce with Kern TV. So thank you, Renee, for all the help.
Let me see if the commissioners have any observations or questions for you.
Now, Tim does a great job, he takes a big interest in his students and helps students that sometimes would struggle to get to class or get to their work, and he makes sure that he helps do that, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Walters.
I just can't thank you enough for integrating the high school with the College of the Abermawell. Seems like history has it, that that wasn't always the case, and I really appreciate the fact that the college and the high schools are working so closely together now.
I appreciate that remark. You know, as a retired high school principal, I have had some pushback, that we don't do this in a community college, we don't do it this way, and it's taken some time, and the previous president, Dr. DiDamar, she said to me one day, she said, I want you to go out to Dare County and I want you to work with the high school principals, and it was like going back home. And we just connected, and I can't say enough about the new superintendent, John Farley, he's 100% behind this. We talk about logistics, you know, buses and getting the students to the campus, we're working with distance learning with Cape Hatteras, as a matter of fact, we have a big meeting with them to get them involved and get them on board even more so. So thank you for that comment, I appreciate that. It's really a close-knit group right now.
Commissioner Walters.
I too would like to thank you, and while the Huskins Bill and Dual Enrollment has been around for a while, you have really grown by leaps and bounds in providing great opportunities for our high school students, but you also provide great opportunities for older citizens within the community. And when I moved here as a young mother, I went to COA and got my Associate's Degree there, so it was an opportunity that, well, it was the only opportunity I had at the time, and so it meant a great deal to me, and I think you just play a vital role in our community and our economy, so thank you.
Thank you for that comment. And you know, this community is just unbelievable. I've come from Hampton Roads, I'm not criticizing, but it's so large. Between the scholarships and the support from, you know, commissioners of the towns and the Dare County Commissioners and the citizens, the industry is just fabulous. I mean, right away, they're going to take care of our students and work with us to train them. And I have to tell you this, I'm an educator. I know nothing about electricity or, you know, welding and stuff. When you get the industry to come in and teach these programs, like engine repair, there's no way that we could have had that without that industry saying, hey, Tim, we'll do this, we'll teach it. Now, they're a little bit nervous about teaching, but once they meet the children and the students and the adults, it clicks. But thank you for that, I appreciate that. And thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for coming today. I heard as much energy and focus as you hear in any enterprise of any kind, much less an educational enterprise, and so I appreciate that. And I'm going to maybe work with staff and talk to Chairman Woodard and see if we can help you with that Fed problem with the students. We, you need them as students, we need them in the workforce, we appreciate them in our community, we love having them here, so if we can help with that, we'll try. Thank you.
Thank you all.
The next presentation, we have the Jeanette's Pier, where'd he go? Mike Remish is going to give us the State of the Union of Jeanette's Pier.
Thank you, Cliff. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Pleasure to be with you today, to give you an update on what's been happening at Jeanette's Pier for the past two years. Oh, sorry. No problem. While I have this moment, I would like to thank Cliff and all of his staff with the town. From the moment Jeanette's Pier reopened in 2011, they have been fantastic partners with us. We love working with you all, and I just needed to get that out there, and thank you all very much. All right. All right, since I was unable to be with you last year, I do want to point out that as I touch on some of the subjects you see in front of you, that the data will be for both 2017 and 2018, so for the past two calendar years. both 2017 and 2018, so for the past two calendar years. All right, the big numbers. Over the past two years, Jeanette's Pier has seen more than 350,000 visitors. And when I talk about pier visitors, I'm talking about people that actually step foot on the pier. We know that we have many more site visitors. Fully half of our parking lot in the summer are people that come to the beach access there and utilize our bathhouse, may not actually step foot on the pier. But these are numbers that we record as they go through the lobby and pay for their admissions fee. So more than 350,000. We average, since we've opened, about 185,000 visitors a year to the pier. Fully 15 to 20% of those are fishermen, as you can see. 66% of full two-thirds are actually people that just go out on the pier to sightsee and enjoy, enjoy the social life out there. So what does this all mean for Dare County and the town of Nagshead? Just as the College of the Albemarle Economic Impact Statement was a little bit old, this one's a little dated. But in Dare County, Jeanette's Pier supports 64 full-time equivalent jobs annually, more than $5 million in economic output, and nearly $11 million in off-site spending attributable to the presence of Jeanette's Pier. Operationally, for the first time since we opened in 2011, we have increased our admissions fees. Annually, we review all of our fees, program fees, admissions fees, look at what the market bears, look at what all the other piers are doing. And we've been actually pushing for the past few years to increase our admission fees slightly. We finally received approval from our department. All of our fees, admissions fees, program fees must be approved by the Secretary of our Department, Natural and Cultural Resources. One thing that we did want to take advantage of when we did raise our fees slightly, we did not like the fact that sales tax showed up on our old fees. Nobody likes paying $2.12 to walk out on the fishing pier. So we took advantage of the opportunity and rolled all the state sales tax into the fees. So when we charge somebody for fishing, it's a whole dollar amount, the tax is already included in that. Last year, we also implemented a code of conduct for our visitors as well as our staff. What this does is it provides us the legal framework to deal with unruly and disruptive people in a state facility. It's gone very well so far. It was well received by all of our visitors and I think it's done wonders for us because now everybody understands that their actions have consequences. All right, some big changes that we started on last fall. Just for you that may not know, we are part of the North Carolina Aquariums. The other three aquarium facilities have all gone through gift shop renovations. And what they've seen after going through those renovations is a huge increase in sales. So it is now our turn. The images you see on the left are mockups. They are not actual. But we are going to brighten up the space. We're going to add a lot more interactive, a lot of colors, a lot of graphics to the area. The image on the right, and this is where the big changes will occur. The footprint is not changing at all, but what we're doing is we're consolidating all the food service, which is not very much, and the tackle shop into the lower left-hand portion where the curved wall is. We've also put in, we'll be putting in a central cash wrap. It was very difficult for our customers to understand where they were supposed to pay for things when they were leaving the gift shop. Quite often, they'd walk right out of the gift shop and up to our admissions counter where we couldn't process their transaction. So by adding the central cash wrap, it adds more security. They'll have a better view, the staff in there will have a better view of the floor. And it should, the visitors shouldn't have any problem figuring out where they need to go. The renovation should be finished by the end of this month, maybe into early March. Our gift shop is presently closed at the moment. We are also, we've been working on this for quite a while, but we will be changing out all of the lighting in the entrance to the pier. All 29 overhead parking lights, which are metal halides at present, many of them are not functioning anymore. Will be replaced with LEDs in the coming weeks, as well as our pathway lighting and all the bollards on our entrance ramp. So a complete upgrade there. Everything will be LED, should add to our energy efficiency. We've also worked with the town planning department, and I'd like to thank them for their work on the lighting project, to repair our stormwater retention system. We have a problem with an overflow that leads to erosion right there on the beach road between us and Salmon Omies. And in the coming weeks, that will be taken care of as well. We also are taking this opportunity to update and upgrade our entrance branding. As simple as it seems to me that people would understand where you enter the pier house, apparently it's not that easy for a lot of our visitors. They see that ocean in front of them and they want to walk straight through and don't come through the pier house where they pay their admissions fee. So we're taking advantage of some concrete beams across the ceiling at our entrance to indicate where the entrance is and also promote some of the items for sale in our gift shop, bait, tackle, ice, things like that. We're working with a local artist to, obviously my mockup, I'm not much of an artist myself. It's not very pretty, but we are working with a local artist who is going to hand paint those beams for us. Also, on the reverse side, as people are exiting, we're going to try to leave them with some nice conservation messages so they think about where they are in the environment that they live in. All right, in January of 2018, we started to add some new exhibits to the pier house in the lobby. On loan from the North Carolina Maritime Museum in Beaufort, we received a Jervice beaked whale skeleton. These are really rare whales. They live in deep water offshore. We don't get to see them very often. It's very fitting that the pier resides in Whalebone Junction. And it's also very fitting that we work with the marine mammal stranding network there. So we thought this was a perfect opportunity to teach people about the marine mammals, marine mammal stranding network and some of the, some of the animals they might be able to see from the pier. Once again, that is on loan and will be with us for another two months. In the meantime, we've contracted with the gentleman at the Maritime Museum, Keith Ripmuster, who rearticulated that Jervice beaked whale skeleton, to rearticulate a bottlenose dolphin skeleton. The best thing about this bottlenose dolphin is, he was a resident of the Outer Banks for 30 years. He traveled between, and it's well documented for 30 years. Mo traveled between the Outer Banks and the Boge Banks. There is photo identification of him that goes back those 30 years. Unfortunately, he finally passed away two years ago and Keith Ripmuster obtained his body and was able to put together his skeleton for us. We have, we paid for those services and as of Monday, we installed Mo in the lobby of the pier house and he is on permanent display there at Jeanette's Pier. So he is a new, new member of our family at Jeanette's Pier. And there is also digital interpretation, all about Mo's life, about the marine mammal stranding network, and about the good work of Keith Ripmuster and his team at the Maritime Museum. And looking forward, when the Jervice beaked whale sailor Jerry leaves us in a couple months, we are preparing this time next year to receive a mother and calf pigby sperm whale rearticulated skeletons. These animals are also linked to the Outer Banks. Unfortunately, in 2014, they beached just north of Outer Banks Pier and passed away. Once again, Keith Ripmuster, who is the gentleman on the left in the white lab coat, and his team are in the process of rearticulating those skeletons for us. And they will be displayed permanently in Jeanette's Pier House going forward, as of January 2020. All right, I just want to point out that we are more than just a fishing pier. We are also a research platform and have had a partnership with the UNC Coastal Studies Institute, honestly, since the old Jeanette's Pier was around in 2004. We have just renewed our memorandum of understanding with them to bring research and observing projects to the pier for another five years. Recently, just last fall, the Coastal Studies Institute deployed a wave rider buoy, which is similar to the yellow object you see in the middle of the screen, 10 miles due east of the pier. That is now up and running and providing real-time data. That data will soon be available through our website and soon be available in our pier house. Hopefully in the next month or two, that'll be up for everyone. The instrument that you see on the right is an acoustic wave and current profiler. It was installed on the ocean floor, within close proximity to the pier. It was removed about a year ago, has been upgraded and will be redeployed this spring. Once again, all the data that that instrument collects will be available through our website and in our pier house once it's back in the water. I do want to thank the town and the Visitors Bureau again for allowing us to be the official event site for all the events you see listed there on the screen. It is our honor to host these events and we thoroughly enjoy being the oceanfront venue that everyone chooses to come to. We also enjoy hosting private events. And over the past two years, through our facility rental program, we have had 109 wedding events, as well as more than 70, or, excuse me, as well as 75 other types of corporate meetings, receptions, high school proms, et cetera. Our facility rental program, just so everyone knows, generates a full 20% of the revenue that we bring in at the pier. It's a significant portion of our income. And once again, we do not receive any state tax dollars to operate the facility. We live off the revenue that we generate on site and that our nonprofit support organization supplies to us to balance the books. So no state tax dollars go into the operations of Jeanette's Pier. Once again, going back to that economic impact study, what does this mean locally? Well, just our rental department, spending attributable to that exceeds $2 million a year and involves 35 to 50 local vendors. Now, these numbers are about five years old, but they are, they are significant. We've also been recognized by two of the main wedding industry publications in the state of North Carolina, actually in the country, for the past four and five years as being a Couples Choice Award and Best of Weddings Award for our venue. With everything that we do, I have to, I have to brag a little bit on our education department. I believe that they are the crown jewel of our programming at the pier. They have grown significantly since we opened in 2011. Just in the past two years, we've operated 38 week-long summer camps with more than 400 local kids in those camps. We've offered more than 150 public programs. Those are mainly our fishing programs, our Beach Creatures of the Night programs. But most importantly to me is the fact that we have had more than 200 North Carolina schools travel from all over the state to come to Jeanette's Pier for educational programming. And we've reached more than 15,000 North Carolina school students with those programs over the past two years. And just to show you what that means, we've had students from more than 50 counties in the state, more than half the state, travel here and have included us in their travel plans. They come to the pier. The ones that are coming from the western and central part of the state are often spending the night here with us. They're staying in our hotels, they're eating in our restaurants, and they are visiting all the other attractions that Nagshead and Dare County have to offer. We are extremely proud of this. We have grown from just a few counties in our first year to, as you can see, more than But we can't reach everyone. A lot of these schools, especially Title I schools, can't afford to get here. They can't afford the travel, they can't afford to pay for the programming. So two years ago, our nonprofit support organization, the North Carolina Aquarium Society, partnered with NC Public Schools and with the North Carolina Aquariums, all four facilities, to create a fund where private donors can fund field trips and outreach programs for Title I schools, underserved school districts. We got the program up and running in late 2017. In that year, Jeanette's Pier had 11 school groups, reached out to more than 800 students, whether it was field trips or outreach. This year, this, and I'm looking at fiscal year, so for those of you that don't know, the state fiscal year starts in July and ends in June. We have 16 school groups signed up and more than 2,000 kids that are being provided educational programming, STEM-based educational programming, due to these grants that the Aquarium Society is awarding. And we've, we're also trying to improve our reach locally. Unfortunately, this, this program is kind of born out of tragedy. A couple of years ago, one of our young small fry campers passed away at the age of five suddenly. Her mother and her godmother, her godmother is Tamara Hughes, who is the woman in the picture on the right, in the blue shirt, is our gift shop manager. They worked very closely, family and friends, with our education department to create a scholarship fund for underserved youth in Dare County and the surrounding counties to attend our summer camps on scholarship. Many of these kids are unable to afford our summer camps. We've worked with Friends of Youth to choose, pick and choose the kids that would be best suited for these camps and may gain the most out of them. All of this has been funded through a series of taco cook-offs, the annual Outer Banks Taco Cook-Off. In 2019, it'll be Sunday, April 28th, at Ortega's in Manio. And as you can see, we've raised significant funds for these scholarships. The money we raised in the first two years will support camp scholarships for the next decade. But we're not going to sit on our laurels. We're going to continue to do the fundraiser every year with the support of the local community and hopefully allow more kids who may not have the means to be able to attend our summer camps. I also want to point out that these summer camps are not, we're not just giving scholarships for local kids to attend the week-long camps with other campers. We have also created a couple of overnight camps for kids from outside of Dare County that are within the North Carolina, excuse me, northeastern North Carolina region. In the past couple of years, we've brought in groups of kids from Edenton, Elizabeth City, and the like, where they come in for a day of adventure and education. They spend the night in the pier house and they wake up the next day and they do it all over again before they go home. Many of these kids, even though they live less than an hour from the coast, have never seen the ocean, much less been in the ocean. So we're very proud of those accomplishments. And I also want to point out that we've added an outreach component to our education department. In 2017, we hired a full-time educator and outreach coordinator. In that first year, she was able to go out into the community and surrounding areas and provide eight programs for 200 students. Just last year, you can see that she's more than tripled her numbers in a single year and we look forward to the good work that she continues to do. Couple of years ago, the Outer Banks Marine Mammal Stranding Network was in dire straits. This is an all-volunteer network. It's made up of local community members, staff from the Wildlife Resources Commission, and staff from the Park Service. At one point, the North Carolina Aquarium in Manio also partnered on this, in this network. Unfortunately, or fortunately for them, when the STAR Center, the Sea Turtle Rehab Center was built in Manio, it took all of their workforce and all of their effort to be able to maintain that facility. So they had to step away from the Marine Mammal Stranding Network. Well, this was an opportunity for staff at Jeanette's Pier to step in and fill that void. We're excited. In 2017, voluntarily, we joined the network. We now oversee as first responders the central part of the region of the Outer Banks, so basically from Duck through South Nagshead. Park Service covers south of there and the Wildlife Resources Commission covers north of there. One thing that's unique about North Carolina is we see more marine mammals in our waters than almost anywhere else in the world. As a matter of fact, I was told just the other day that the only place where more marine mammals have been identified, unique species, is the country of Argentina. The state of North Carolina has identified more than 35 unique species of marine mammals in our waters over the years. Unfortunately, a lot of that is because they strand and die on our beaches. But this is where the science comes from. We wouldn't know about many of these species. They live so far offshore, there's never any human interaction, without the good work of marine mammal stranding networks around the world. Here locally, we, we assess the animals, we take vital measurements and statistics, and then we determine whether or not the animal needs to be necropsied on the beach to determine cause of death, if at all possible, or sent to a facility that can do greater histology and more work on those animals. It's sometimes difficult work, but we're very proud of the work we do. Sometimes it can be disheartening. But every once in a while, you get a success story. You all may have seen in the local news last fall that there was a report of a dolphin in distress north of Pirate's Cove. It seemed to have become entangled in some crab pots. Our educator, Rachel Potts, was the first responder on call that day. She answered the Marine Mammal Stranding Network hotline. She went to the scene, assessed the situation, was able to identify where the dolphin was and that, yes, it was in distress. She called in reinforcements, including Marine Patrol and Wildlife Resources Commission officers. And as you can see in the photo in the lower left, miraculously, they were able to corral that dolphin and cut the buoy loose in a matter of seconds. And the animal swam off basically unharmed. What could have been a tragedy turned into a great day. So every once in a while, you get a victory. Just a few more things I'd like to point out. We are, along with our other three aquarium facility partners, moving forward with some sustainability actions. I'd like to point out our partners on this project, Surf Rider Foundation, and of course, you here at the town of Nagshead. We received a grant from our nonprofit organization to implement sustainability actions at the pier. Our number one goal through this grant funding is to reduce the amount of cigarette litter on our property at Jeanette's Pier as a pilot project, hopefully for the town. We also are going to increase recycling capacity within our parking lot. And of course, we need to let the public know why these actions are important. Most people don't know cigarette butts are actually plastic, 96% plastic. The good thing about that is, they can be recycled. The good thing about that is they can be recycled. So we are in the process of putting together and purchasing a series of handmade, homemade cigarette recycling receptacles. Forty-two of these will be deployed around the property, mainly in the parking lot and on the pier. Surf Rider Foundation locally has made great strides in this effort with the town of Kill Devil Hills in the past. They provided us nearly half, or a little more than half, of the receptacles that you see in front of you. Of course, we got a little artistic and decided to make some of those look like our local lighthouses. Each of these receptacles will also have educational signage on them, letting people know the importance of recycling these products. We will collect them. We will work with the town at our beach access there to collect those butts, and we will send them off to a company called TerraCycle that then cleans them up, melts them down, turns them into new products for industry. So we're looking forward to this program getting off the ground in the next month. And then we'll also be deploying, as I said, 12 more recycling bins in the parking lot with the hopes that the people who frequent the pier choose to use them. A few items of note. For those of you that know David Griffin, long-serving director of the North Carolina Aquarium Division and former director of the aquarium in Manio, he has finally retired after 32 years of service. That was literally one week ago tomorrow. David introduced me to my wife, so there's some significance there for me. I'd also like to acknowledge Neil Conley, who spent more than 40 years with the North Carolina Aquariums, helped found the North Carolina Aquarium Society, our nonprofit organization. He also retired at the end of December. So there's a great sea change, a generational shift going on within the North Carolina Aquariums. I'd also like to point out that just last year, working with former Fire Chief Kevin Zork, we signed a memorandum of understanding with you all to allow the pier to be used during times of natural disaster recovery. I reached out to Chief Zork. I thought it was important that as a central location in the southern part of Nags Head and that community, that we be able to assist whenever we could. So we're proud to say that we had that memorandum of understanding signed, and the town is welcome at any time that they need that facility to assist with these efforts. And I have to point out that after all those good things I told you about, we are still a fishing pier, and we do give people the opportunity to come and make their catch of the day, maybe the catch of a lifetime, or catch something that they've never caught before. And thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Great, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Cahoon?
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Walters?
Thank you.
I'll make one observation while you're in the middle of a sustainability effort. One of the things that I find fairly maddening is to go to the aquariums where there's a great anti-plastic in the message, the damage that plastics do, and then to go to the coffee bar or sit down at a banquet and be served with single-use plastic plates and utensils. And I think a policy that changed that would be great.
And I thank you for bringing that up, Mayor. Actually, I did have a slide in here that I took out. We are, the North Carolina Aquariums are part of the Aquarium Conservation Partnership, which was started two years ago by the National Aquarium, the Shed Aquarium, and Monterey Bay Aquarium. Twenty-four aquariums nationwide have signed on in an effort to not just educate the public about the problem of single-use plastics, but also to eliminate them from our operations. We have been working on that for the past year and a half. We are doing a very good job of it. Our goal is by December of 2020 to eliminate even plastic water bottles for sale in our gift shop. So we are working towards that goal, and we're very proud of our efforts so far.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Appreciate that leadership. Thank you. If the board will indulge me, I'd like to suggest we get through the consent agenda and then take a break, a short break, I think would be appropriate. We're going to be approaching 90 minutes at that point. So...
Is that a public comment?
No, no, no. I'm sorry, yes. No, before I get there, I'm sorry, I want to get through public comment and consent agenda before we get to the break. So if the board's okay with that. Right? So the next item on our agenda is public comment. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the board will welcome public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Commissioners with any interests, concerns, or observations that they have. It's not an opportunity for a dialogue with the commissioners or to discuss matters with individual members of the Board of Commissioners. But anybody who wishes to address the board, if you would please, go to the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your remarks to the board as a group.
Good morning, everybody. My name is John Cece, resident here of Nags Head, and I'd like to express some concerns about your item 6B under New Business, the no-parking tow-away zone at town beach accesses. One of the things I do is I volunteer with the Network for Endangered Sea Turtles, NEST, with a local nonprofit that monitors sea turtle activities here on the Outer Banks. During the late summer, frequently we'll have nests that do not start hatching until 11:00, 11:30, and our volunteers will be on the beach till sometimes 1:00, 1:30 in the morning assisting the new hatchlings getting into the water. Depending on where the nests are, frequently we'll use the public accesses. So if you could somehow, I'm not sure of the flexibility, I don't have a solution to this, maybe change the hours from, instead of midnight to six, maybe two to five or something like that, to allow the volunteers not have to worry about getting a ticket for volunteering. Part of our other efforts of doing the sea turtle monitoring is first thing in the morning right at sunrise. We have volunteers that are riding the beach with ATVs. It always surprises me when I do it, the number of tourists that are out looking at the sunrise. And frequently, as you know, during the summer, that's going to happen before 6:00 in the morning. And there are a lot of tourists that are using those public accesses to look at the sunrises. So I'm not sure you want to start ticketing people for getting up early to get out and look at the sunrise. The other thing is I'm also a fisherman, and frequently I'll be out fishing before 6:00 in the morning and using those public accesses. And I'd hate to come back off of the beach and find out that I've got a ticket for being out and just enjoying our local resources. So again, my only suggestion for the solution to that is maybe just change the hours instead of midnight to six, from two to five or two to four or something. At least that would give you the opportunity to prevent the overnight parking, which I'm assuming that's the reason for your trying to implement this ordinance. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cece. Would anybody else care to address the board? Anybody at all? All right. If not, at this time, we will conclude the public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. If I could, we don't normally respond immediately, but I know that there's been some discussion, Cliff, about the hours and the tolerance for folks who are, in particular with NEST or out there early for legitimate reasons. If you could address that.
Yes, sir. He makes some very valid points, and the examples he gave are those that could be caught in this situation. But I think what we're recommending to the board is to make a consistent ordinance that addresses and applies to all beach accesses and sound accesses. Currently, the least restricted access, there's no parking is permitted from 12 to 6 on all the accesses, with, I believe, the exception of Bonnet Street. So this is in place. The issue we have and the issue police has is that some of these parking spots, some of these parking beach accesses, they're not consistent. Some are nine, some are eight, some are 10. And this would be to make it consistent. And the benefit of having a good police department is they have good discretion. And if the case may be that someone had to leave their car in a spot for whatever reason it was broken down, or it was the right thing to do, rather than driving that car out of that parking lot, we have the ability to address that. If someone gets a ticket, it's a town ticket. It's a $50 fine. All that money goes to board education, so it's not revenue generated for the town. But we can use the discretion, the police can revoke that ticket, they can do away with that ticket. One thing we might be able to do, this won't address all of the NEST volunteers, is maybe we could come up with an agreed-upon placard that can go in the dash of the car. That's not going to catch all of the NEST volunteers. But if someone were to come in and say, hey, I was out volunteering, I got a ticket. If it adds up, and the police have a good detector for that, then we can dismiss that ticket. I don't know that this has been an issue with people getting tickets for fishing or beach walking or watching the sunrise. I'm not aware if it is. But again, you know, what we try to, what this allows us to do is prohibit private use of our parking lots. If a house is overcrowded, they may park, they need parking lots, and sometimes that can generate noise. But again, we have the discretion to be able to dismiss if the case may be.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you addressing that now, and we'll address it further when we get to that item. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. It's my understanding there's interest in removing one item, which is number five. That's E5, and I would suggest that we make that New Business, item seven. And so with that, a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified would be in order.
Submove.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as modified. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And the last item before we take a break, item F, reports and recommendations from the Planning Board, Planning and Development Director.
Sir, I believe we'll start with Planner Holly White with the Focus UDO update.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Excuse me. I'm happy to provide you an update of the Focus UDO process. You did receive the draft in December. The technical committee met in January. The board discussed this at their retreat. We feel that we can, based on the feedback that we've gotten from both the board and the technical committee at this point, that we can move forward, vetting out issues with the technical committee. We've proposed a revised schedule that you see on the screen to explain the timeline for doing that, and just wanted to get your direction on the best way to move forward towards adoption of this document. I will note that the scheduled adoption is shown as the top date, and we work from the bottom up. Sorry about that, Roberta.
Yeah. Aren't we supposed to have a meeting? Oh, I did. Never.
Okay.
So the schedule notes at the bottom, the starting point being the Board of Commissioners Retreat, and then we have itemized tasks that staff needs to complete in order to finalize the document, ending with adoption, a proposed adoption date in May.
I guess my only question is, I thought we agreed that we were going to have a joint meeting, and I don't see it up here.
I think we were, we...
We did. No, 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 but I think in the packet, staff's recommendation is that, based on the clarity that they've gotten from us, that they didn't feel as though that joint meeting was any longer necessary, that they could take that out and move this forward to... Am I reading that correctly, Holly?
That is correct. I think we worked up three different alternatives, which I have a copy of those with me today. And based on the taking out the joint workshop, we would be able to shave a month off of the adoption. So rather than potentially adopting in June, if we had the joint workshop, we could adopt it in May without it.
Yeah. I like the idea of safely getting this done before the fiscal year starts and that we don't end up with a hiccup that pushes us into the year. So Commissioners, Commissioner Cahoon? Commissioner Walters? Webb?
I'm fine as long as we're all on the same page with all the other groups.
Okay.
You know, I mean, because I thought the meeting was to make sure we're all on the same page.
Right.
And obviously, I don't know if that's the case. So I'm fine. I'm not advocating another meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Is there consensus that staff should proceed with the schedule unless there's a hiccup and perceived need at a later date for an additional meeting, that we ask staff to proceed with this schedule?
As far as I know, based on what we get back on the 27th.
Okay. Yes. Very good. All right.
Let me ask one thing. What do you expect to do between a community meeting and the planning board?
I think the community meeting is an opportunity for, I mean, I would hope that by the time we reach planning board, all major issues have been dealt with and vetted, that the community meeting would be an opportunity for the community to view the final draft and to allow us, staff time, to vet out any major concerns that may come up through that so that the adoption process can be, hopefully, very smooth.
So I guess what you're assuming is that at the community meeting, we won't have a hiccup.
Well, I mean, we are hoping that we have vetted out all major concerns by that point, yes.
There would be, there's going to be a public hearing for the adoption of this as well, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, my hope would be that the community meeting is primarily informational and a rollout.
Nothing on this. I have a question after we finish this session.
Okay. All right. Okay. I think that's it for this, Holly. Commissioner Cahoon?
I have a question, is where we are in the submission process to coastal management with the previous part of the document, the Focus.
It's been submitted. We are, there is some information additional that I'm getting to Ms. Owens at the KAMA office, but that documentation has been submitted.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Cliff, it's my understanding you're substituting for David.
Forgive me, but I will read the, this item in summary, but it's just briefly to let the board and the public know where we are in the three projects that you've approved. Actually, yesterday, the local government commission approved the financing of these three projects, and the bank closing for this will be, is it next Friday?
February 15th.
So February 15th, at which time we'll be able to sign the contracts and get started. But let's see, the three projects, Drainage Infrastructure Improvement Projects, three separate drainage infrastructure improvement projects are being proposed encompassing the following work. First, culvert replacement upstream of the Red Drum motion outfall. Second, the groundwater lowering pump system in Forest Main on West Bridge Lane in Nags Head Acres, and then the infiltration trenches on South Virginia Dare Trail between East Mall Drive and East Epstein Street. Over the past month, staff has secured the necessary permit, submitted the finance package to the LGC, which I mentioned was approved, managed easement acquisitions, and contract coordination and preparation of these projects to start later this month. We will have a public meeting. We'll notify all those adjacent property owners to these projects by mail. That meeting is scheduled for February 19th, and that's to communicate the project timelines and what the affected folks can anticipate from the construction conditions. Also, at the same time all this is going on, Withers, Ravenel, and David Ryan are working on developing the conceptual solutions to the other eight projects, as well as, originally we started with 13, there were two that we kicked back to the drawing board, so all of that is still going on. And we plan to present those at your first CIP workshop in March.
Thank you, Commissioners. Questions? Yep? Okay. Thank you, Cliff. Appreciate you standing in for that. At this point, we've been a little over 90 minutes, so I'm going to suggest that we take a five-minute recess. Okay, the board will... Okay, the board will return to order. Thank you very much for those of you who were waiting on projects and indulged us. The next item on our agenda is item G, G1, the text amendment. Assume this is Andy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is continued from last month. The board had, had reviewed a text amendment request submitted by Brian Rabino on behalf of two local restaurants, Tale of the Whale and Miller's, to consider adding a new use to the ordinance to allow docking facilities. And these would be facilities where basically would be for transient day use only to allow patrons of these restaurants to come in boats and dock and dine at the restaurant and leave. The board obviously discussed this last month. We had a proposal from the applicant. The board had a presentation by former Mayor Bob Edwards where issue of consistency with the comprehensive plan was brought up. The board then asked the town attorney and staff to look at the comprehensive plan and determine if the request was consistent. You have been given an analysis provided by staff in the memo as well as a separate letter from the attorney with both opinions of consistency. To summarize, staff's opinion, and I'll let the town attorney summarize his own opinion, staff feels like that with some additional provisions added to the proposal to address issues such as water quality, overall environmental quality, public safety and land use compatibility, that the board could make a finding of consistency only if those things are done. The applicant has provided us a letter, which was in your packet, providing you with additional conditions they are willing to attach to their proposal. If the board should choose to accept those conditions, that would, would then make the proposal more consistent with the comprehensive plan. And, and those items are included in the draft ordinance as the applicant's proposed revision. So obviously you have the definition of commercial marina and docking facility. And in theirs, in those definitions, we've highlighted two separate numbers. Eight was the original number that they had proposed for the docking facility would be eight or less slips. Staff had put in six as an alternative to that, which we would probably be more comfortable with. And then there's the proposed revision to the conditional use itself, which includes additional conditions that you didn't have previously. Just going through those really quickly, this would now tie it to restaurants, so it would be an accessory use to a principal restaurant use only. There would be one docking facility allowed per lot. You could not have any of the following services, permanent docking spaces, overnight mooring, dry storage, fueling facilities, haul-out facilities, repair services, or any other water-dependent commercial outdoor recreational use. So essentially, they would just be available for people coming and going on a daily transient basis and not for a fee. Additional condition, the boat slips at the facility should not be used to satisfy any of the required parking, so you wouldn't be able to add any customer service area based on those slips. There would be a limitation on how far out from the shoreline these could extend. The proposal is 200 feet measured perpendicular from the shoreline, 30 inches of normal water depth in any areas of the boat access and the slips. And this is something that typically KAMA is also looking for in order to protect the sound bottom. KAMA is also looking for limiting these in areas of SAV. And so we feel like KAMA is probably more comprehensive in that area than we would be. We also talk, the ordinance also talks about a no-wake zone that would extend 400 feet from the end of the facility. This is something we may want to discuss further separately from this ordinance, but staff feels like that in addition to this, we may want to look at a no-wake zone in this area that's not part of this ordinance, that becomes part of a separate chapter of the town code, which could be done as a police power ordinance anytime in the next month or two. And, you know, as, as you know, this, this application is proposed as a conditional use. And so any facility that would come forward for approval would come back to the board as a conditional use. And so if the board were, were to consider a no-wake zone in this area, then that could be done prior to any consideration of a conditional use for any facility. So with that said, staff feels like the applicant's proposed revision could be consistent with the town's, or could be found to be consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and we would recommend approval.
Couple of questions, Andy, before I turn it over to the board. It's my recollection that staff's original recommendation for the number of slips on this was four.
That's right.
And the, the other question was, right now, we have no-wake zones established for various kinds of outdoor recreation businesses, like the jet ski rentals, there would be a wake zone applied to this. You're suggesting that we could consider possibly at our next meeting, for example, to give time for public notice, a no-wake zone that would apply perhaps to the entire overlay area that would then be uniform for everybody and they wouldn't be, everybody wouldn't be responsible for essentially their own no-wake zone.
Right. Right. I think that would be the better way to do it. And right now, chapter four of the code, I believe, talks about a no-wake zone for the commercial outdoor recreation businesses that are water-dependent. So if you have a jet ski rental or tour boat rental, basically, your, your, your no-wake zone is 600 feet from the shoreline adjacent to any residential district, but it does not apply in this area. And so, you know, you're not restricted if you, if you go off, if you rent a jet ski and you go 100 feet from the, from the pier, there's no restriction on, on the wake. And so you could apply a no-wake zone to this use, the boat slips, but jet skis would still be able to do it. And so I think if we're talking about overall protection to the environment, then that, that should be applied uniformly throughout the district for all people. And then we could go out and put the appropriate signage to let people know what the requirements are. And then we could go communicate to the businesses that operate in those areas of what the new requirement would be. And I, I don't feel like people would, would be opposed to that. You know, I, I don't think it's problematic for them to instruct their users to go perpendicular for, from the shoreline 600 feet before they begin to operate. And so.
It also helps with both the aquatic issue and the, and the safety issue to some degree.
Right.
And my last question, and I'm, I'm asking this in part for the Commissioner who's absent as a point of clarification. Primary and accessory uses. So we have, this ordinance would permit restaurants to have accessory piers. And clearly, if it's a four, six slips, whatever it is, it is going to be subordinate to the business and the pier is not the primary. In those other cases where the jet ski business is primary, for example, they can have an accessory food service of some kind, but that would seem to me to have to be pretty small in order to be rendered accessory.
Right. And the ordinance says that, and it does, it's not that clear in terms of the size or scale of what that accessory food service or restaurant can be. So that's something we may want to look at. But, you know, obviously, this ordinance says it has to be accessory. In the definition of docking facility, it says as an accessory to a principal commercial use. And then in the conditions, it says for this district, it's accessory to restaurant only. So we would have to meet the definition and the conditional use provisions. And so if it says in the definition, accessory to a principal commercial use, well, if you had an accessory restaurant associated with an outdoor recreation use, you then couldn't have an accessory boat pier to, as an accessory to an accessory use. And that's more confusion than I'm sure anybody wants, but that's, that's how it would work.
All right. That's all for me. Commissioners, Commissioner Cahoon? I'm sorry.
I have a clarification question.
Yes, sir.
Does staff prefer its language for conditional use or does staff prefer the applicant's proposed revision? Or do you care?
Well, the applicant submitted a letter to us with bullet points of what they would accept. And so we, we took that and we, we sort of revised some of that to, to create this proposed revision. So I think we're more comfortable with the proposed revision. I think it's more comprehensive and addresses all the concerns a lot better than the original proposal. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Walters?
I have a question. I'm not sure you can answer it. Roberta, could I get you to blow that, the map up, please?
You could also have that.
Oh.
Where the, where the actual site is.
To blow it up to.
I'm not sure where it is.
Oh, it's right there with that blue thing.
Can, can you blow it up more than that?
Sure, sure.
My vision, I have some glasses.
So from looking at it, I'm assuming that little line out there is the pier.
Right.
And it makes an L.
Well, now, on this drawing that we did, this is when we did the original water depth measurements. And so there, you can see in the aerial, it's hard to see, but you can see the actual pier that existed at the time this aerial was taken, which was before they extended it. And so then you've got that red line, which represents how far it is now. The, the pier is now approximately 200 feet from the shoreline, because Miller's has already done an extension beyond the gazebo. But there is no L shape currently. That's what they want to do.
They want to do the L.
They want, they want to do an addition for the slips. Right now, it's just a straight pier that you can walk out on.
So the slips would be on the north side of the pier?
Well, when we discussed this a couple of years ago with them, that's what they had been approved for by KAMA, for their KAMA major permit. But depending on the outcome of this ordinance, they may end up having to revise that facility. Because they, they had been approved by KAMA and, and Brian Rabino can speak to this much better than I can, but I believe KAMA had approved them for nine or 10 slips and that what they had approved was an L shape that turned to the north. And so if the board approved the use, limiting it to six or four slips, then obviously they would have to go and revise that as well.
My, my biggest concern, I'm not opposed to a pier. My biggest concern is, is the public safety and, and the environmental issues, primarily the public safety. And with the pier, the L facing north and the docking proposed to be from the north, it's right next to the Harvey Public Access Site. And that site is typically used for launching non-motorized vehicle, watercrafts such as kayaks and paddleboards and things like that. So that automatically creates, in my mind, a conflict there. If that could be avoided, you know, a, a no-wake zone would certainly be helpful. But if, if the L could face the other way, south, and they docked from the other side, that would help to eliminate some of the conflict of them coming in right at the, at the Harvey site, literally right in front of it before they dock the boat. Is that a possibility? How hard is it to amend a, a KAMA permit? I don't know.
Okay. Before, and maybe before we have the applicant speak, I think Commissioner Cahoon had an observation about the KAMA.
We're getting, the application is a broad.
Oh, I know.
Zone-wise, and we're getting very specific about something that we don't even have a site plan for. We've got some illustrations, but we'll have a lot of time for input if this ordinance passes and they bring a site plan in, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
My only concern is I don't want us to get too tied around site specific.
I mean, I know it applies to 14 sites.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong. But again, my primary concern is just the public safety aspect. And on this particular site, it happens to be right next to a public access.
Well, I think it's good that, you know, they're going to be coming back to the same board and so it's good for them to hear this because they can be mindful of that when they consider their design.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
I do have a couple more questions generically. I share the public safety comment. That's been my concern all along is how much carrying capacity. But you answered a question that the mayor asked just now. If a outdoor recreational use wanted to add a restaurant subject to size capabilities of the property, theoretically, they could have the pier with slips and a restaurant to go along with their outdoor recreational use. Is that correct?
Well, I think it's a good question. You know, if, if they have an outdoor recreation use, typically they do have a pier with slips. You know, a lot of times it'll have pull-up slips for jet skis or have slips for boats and, you know, they're, they're limited on the number of jet skis they, they can have. You know, I think the way we would read this is if the restaurant is accessory to that outdoor recreation use, then they could not add these slips for transient public use. They could have the commercial outdoor recreation use for the jet ski rental, but they couldn't also have on top of that this.
I guess what I'm getting at is if they had a large enough site and given the district, there may be areas where that, they could typically have what they have now and still add a restaurant facility to it, subject to all the ordinance conditions and so forth like that. And I guess you can't technically have two principal uses on a site, but.
Yeah, that's, you know, what I, what I was trying to suggest earlier is that, you know, in a case where you've got an outdoor recreation use, then you could only add a restaurant as an accessory use. And then this use, the docking facility, is also considered an accessory use. And you can't have an accessory to an accessory. So we probably wouldn't allow that.
So if I'm understanding, so at some point, someone working on that kind of exercise, understanding that some level of food service as accessory would be permitted if you've got a jet ski rental business, that would be limited. But if somebody tried an end around of getting a restaurant in, at, at some point, that's going to be considered a restaurant application for a site plan.
Right.
And then we would look at that site plan application as a restaurant and what was accessory to it and what would be permitted.
Right. You know, I mean, I think, I don't want to point out all the loopholes and, but, you know, the ordinance, the ordinance doesn't clearly define restaurant as an accessory use. It, it says you can have a restaurant as an accessory use. And when I'm, I'm thinking of, what's the putt-putt golf with the frozen yogurt and a few other things? That, that's what I would consider accessory restaurant. I wouldn't consider Miller's an accessory restaurant.
Yeah.
So, you know, we don't have anything that provides that threshold or breakpoint for when you become principal versus accessory. But when, when the zoning administrator's looking at it, what is more than 50% of their business generated by? And, and I think they look at standards like that.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have one.
Yes.
It might be a question for our attorney. Considering there are currently 14 potential sites, if this ordinance is approved, is there any way to put language in here to stipulate public safety measures if located beside a town access? Is there any way to do that?
You could do that in the, you could do that in the ordinance itself. You could also impose conditions to address that through the conditional use process.
Okay. You have a preference?
Well, if it's in the ordinance, it's easier for an applicant to know exactly what they've got to do as opposed to coming to the board and then finding out that there may be some additional things that they hadn't considered. On the other hand, you know, I think you determine necessary conditions in the conditional use process on a case-by-case basis. So if there's something that you think would be appropriate in a general or across-the-board sort of way, I think it should be in this, in this particular ordinance.
I just, I just think there, if the location is, is beside a, a public access of any kind, I, I think the public safety concerns should be stipulated somehow. And I don't know how to phrase that. I mean, I really don't. So if it's, I mean, if it can be addressed in the conditional use, but like you say, knowing that upfront would be helpful. but like you say, knowing that upfront would be helpful to an applicant, so.
I think in the absence of being able to craft the language, I think we've made it pretty clear to this applicant that
Well, I know, I was thinking future.
Yes.
13 others possibly.
I agree, yes.
Or a couple others.
Right. So I think perhaps we might ask staff if you could find language between now and the next application that would provide us the safety component for adjacent accesses.
Okay. And so between now and the next application?
Well, I, I'm anticipate, I, I, it's hard in, I'm not anticipating what this applicant may do subsequent to this, if, if this ordinance passes today, how soon that they may come in. But I, I think what we're asking staff to do is please address this concern with language. And I, I don't think it's going to be a problem necessarily on this side. I think that message has been conveyed and certainly will be addressed if there's a conditional use application that comes after. But it, it sounds like it would be helpful to know that in any other circumstance that comes out that we have language that can protect adjacent accesses.
Okay, so one, one idea, since we've talked about the UDO schedule, I need to carry this language into that.
That would be helpful.
We could address it with an additional supplemental standard. And that's probably as soon as we'd be able to do anything else.
That would be, that would be pretty good. That would, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Nope. Okay, so we've talked about, we've talked about the scale of this and the, and the, and the safety issues. If there aren't any other questions, then I think someone could try to craft a motion here to
We ask the applicant?
Do we, do, do we want to hear from the applicant?
I'm, I'm fine making a motion unless they want to speak.
If, if I may
Yes.
Just interject one thing. With respect to the revised proposal that you have before you, there's one issue I just wanted to get some clarity on or that I think y'all might want to get some clarity on. Item F, which provides that the docking facility shall include a designated no-wake zone that extends 400 feet from the end of the facility. I think that's designed to, to meet this 600-foot. But what if you had a pier that was only 150 feet? Would we then have a 550 no-wake zone there? Or would you rather that this read that extends for a distance of 600 feet from the shoreline? So that it's a consistent distance all, all throughout the area?
I see head nodding, and that would be consistent probably with what staff is going to come forward with as the no-wake zone anyway.
Yeah. I, I think that's what it was intended, but I was thinking that that, the way that was actually written might have unintended consequences with it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you. I'll ask if the applicant would like to speak to address any of the issues that you may have heard us bring up this morning.
Sure. I'm Brian Rubino with Quivalin Associates. And I just wanted to elaborate just for a second. The memo that I submitted to staff since our last meeting had some possible conditions and restrictions. And if anyone had any questions related to those, I'd be happy to answer those. The first item on that list was making this limited to restaurants. So it would be called basically a restaurant docking facility, which would limit the overall number of properties that could possibly take advantage of having boat slips. And then the other thing I have to just add is that any safety concerns, we'll talk specific to our site plan when we, when we bring that to you. But there's a riparian corridor in front of each property and that extends out into the water. And there are setbacks on either side. So any plan that we develop on this site or any of our projects, we try to cite boat slips right in the middle. So you're not within any of those riparian setbacks on either side. So you wouldn't have to ask for a waiver, whether it be from the town or municipality, depending on where you are. We've also done several projects in Manio. We have Hal Goodman here as well, who's an engineer. And there's several sites in Manio. There's boat launches, there's public-private peers. And that there hasn't been any safety issues there with projects that have gone through the CAMA process and permitted slips like they're supposed to be, you know, outside those setbacks on either side of the, the property boundary. So if, if anyone has any questions for me, I'm, I'm available to, to answer those at this time.
Only one comment. Mr. Rubino, you talked about restaurant only. Just remember, an ordinance affects every bit of the property and what's there today may not be there tomorrow.
Absolutely.
So uses do change. So we can't tie everything into today's use.
Sure, understood.
Web, any questions? Okay, thank you, Brian.
All right, thanks.
All right. Commissioner Fuller, I think you said you were ready to phrase a, a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we have meant Article III, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance, Section 48.7 definitions to be accepted as presented with, under Commercial Marina, noting that that would be four boats under docking facility. That would be four or less boats. And that Section 48, 407, which is General Commercial District, be amended as that labeled applicant proposed revision with Part 4. Instead of extending 400 feet from the end of the facility, that it be extended 600 feet from the edge of the property.
Thank you. Thank you, well done. I think you got it all. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Did we clarify the restaurant docking facility instead of, was that clarified in your motion?
Andy?
The, the ordinance itself limits it to restaurant.
Okay, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is new business committee reports. And that would be from our board members. I'll ask Commissioner Coon, do you have any? I want to thank you for putting COA on the agenda. That was very informative.
You're welcome. I think Dean Sweeney's doing a really good job. Hopefully, we've had the two no-quarums show up at GovEd. Hopefully today will be a quorum and we'll be forwarding to the town a budget, a proposed budget for the next fiscal year.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Fuller, any, any reports?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask Commissioner Fuller?
Yes.
As a point of information, could we start getting the numbers reports from the Visitors Bureau so we can take a look at where we are, occupancy and so forth?
Yes.
Thank you.
What I will do is bring my book back and give it to the town clerk instead of recycling it at the Tours Bureau.
Excellent, thank you. The numbers have always been of great interest since NAGS Head generates a huge percentage of occupancy.
And it's fairly clearly articulated in those men, in those numbers. You're right.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item H2, consideration of an appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Cliff, do you need to speak to this?
No, I think it's laid out what the, the appointments and reappointments for your consideration are in the summary sheet.
So Ms. Suppler's interested in being reappointed?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Ferguson is not?
That's correct.
I would make a motion to reappoint Margaret Suppler to the Board of Adjustments.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to reappoint Margaret, Margaret Suppler to the Board of Adjustments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is consideration of proposed dates for upcoming CIP and budget workshops.
Mr. Mayor, what, what staff's looking for here is to first get the boards to look at these dates and see if they are agreeable for budget workshops as well as the budget schedule. And also to advertise these once you approve them with the public. What we're looking for is the Capital Improvement Program workshop to, first one to be held on March 20th, which is a Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. And then a second one on the 27th. Again, these are just dates that we're proposing. Manager's recommended budget would be presented on May 1st. Budget workshops, May 15th, May 22nd, and then public hearing, June 5th. And then as a follow-up, if necessary, after the public hearing, workshop on June 12th with the adoption at your mid-month meeting, June 19th.
Commissioner Sears expressed that he had, he has a conflict with the March 20th date. Would it be possible, our commissioners looking at their calendars, to shift that to Tuesday, the 19th? March the 19th?
I would prefer that.
Okay. I don't have a conflict either way.
That would work for me. I'll just let you know the 27th, I will have a conflict. We're opening that week, so I don't think that I can just leave the first week.
Understood, thank you.
There's a planning board on our, meeting on our calendar for 9:00 a.m. that same day?
We, we could
Do later in the day?
Well, we could potentially have it in the police training room. The workshop.
Our part. Okay. All right. Okay. So if, with that change
The 19th.
To the 19th for the, that first workshop?
Yes, we'll, we'll either make the police training room available or we could potentially use the South Wing and the Fire Department.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll, we'll confirm that.
Yes.
I'd also just like to let you know that I, I will not be here June 5th or 12th. I apologize, it's, I can't do anything about it at this point.
Understood. Thank you. Any other comments on the schedule? Understand, I am, I understand there are conflicts. I'm also very excited that the season is coming and that business is reopening. Good thing. The next item on our agenda is consideration of a change order to the Beach Nurishment Project. Cliff?
Yes, sir. The, as the board knows, we're under contract with Great Lakes Dredge and Dock. Right now, we're under contract for them to place three, just over 3.7 million cubic yards of sand on the beach. As you also know, we, we have, we're permitted for a max fill of 4 million cubic yards. In a, in recouping the cost that, the sand that we lost from Hurricane Matthew, we were encouraged by FEMA to do a joint applicant or a project that would combine these two projects together. In doing so, we realized some significant savings that those funds from FEMA have been received and they're being held right now by North Carolina Emergency Management. But what that does is it allows us, and Great Lakes has agreed to hold the unit price of $7.20 per cubic yard, allows us to go ahead and get to that 4 million cubic yard threshold. So this change order would be to allow us a change order to the amount of $1,932,040.80 for the placement of 268,339 cubic yards of sand on the beach. Again, this, this does not require a, a budget adjustment. This is just a, because the funds are held in the project ordinance, this just requires the board to authorize me to be able to sign the change order. And Great Lakes has all received and signed it as well.
Just a reminder for the public's benefit that this was something that we anticipated.
Yes, sir.
This is where we had a lot of discussion with the federal government about trying to incorporate this to save them money. And, and the fact that the money is in North Carolina's treasury. Yes.
Does this, um, we looked at our recent retreat at the amount of sand going on the beach. Does that change that figure in any way from what we saw the other day?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
The fill limits are the same.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? In that case, a motion to authorize the change order would be in order.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the change order to the 2019 Beach Nurishment Project. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is consideration of an Ocean Lifeguard apprenticeship program.
Cliff, thank you. As you know, the, the minimum age to be able to, to be hired to work for Ocean Rescue in the town is 18 years old. It's been that way since we've performed Ocean Rescue. Captain Moats came to me and, and along, after discussion with Deputy Chief Height, the idea of lowering that age to 16. Initially, my reaction was absolutely not, no way, forget it. However, I felt like that was unfair to just dismiss without further consideration and asked that Captain Moats go back and he look and say, okay, how can we, how can we put together a program that would allow us, as a pilot program, to determine whether or not we could put something in place that would allow us to hire 16 and 17-year-olds, a, a small amount, four or five, and put them through some type of higher standard of training and mentorship with, with greater oversight and guidance to ensure that this was a viable idea. Rather than just asking the board to allow us to hire 16 and 17-year-olds, this would give us an opportunity to structure something that would prove to us whether or not we could do so. And so I think after some time and some, some fault, after speaking with the League of Municipalities, after speaking with, with Captain Moats speaking with his professional programs and certifications, we've, this is the program that we've come up with. I'll ask him to come forward and, and he, he recognizes the, the, you know, this is an extremely important job and function that we perform, not just in the action of, of when they actually, when the call goes off, but also the, these folks are representatives and ambassadors of the town. And he has done an excellent job of developing lifeguards and, and putting a great group of men and women out on the beach. And the last thing I want to do is allow him to mess that up with hiring 16 or 17-year-olds. So he's probably more cautious and concerned than the rest of us because he's depending on these folks more than we are. So he can go through the particulars of this and lay it out for you.
Hi, good morning. Thanks for your time. Let me start off just by saying that the, the reason I came to him with this idea is that we continue to struggle to recruit people to fill the stands in the summertime. And there's different hurdles that we have to go through, whether it be pay, cost of living. Housing has always been a significant struggle for us, finding housing. And so, and this isn't the answer to everything, but this is potentially one part of that answer. By able to recruiting 16 and 17-year-olds, recruiting from our local, local population. And, you know, at that age, they're still living at home, so they don't have that housing need that other folks may have that come from, from other areas. And so in saying that, we put together this, this idea, this apprenticeship program. And basically, they would go through the same level of training that all our other lifeguards go through, the same standards. And in summary, the additional training that they would receive would be a mentorship And in summary, the additional training that they would receive would be a mentorship program of 80 hours. They would be limited just sitting the stand until they are 18 years of age, so they wouldn't be operating any vehicles on the beach. We would also look to limit the number of shifts that they work, so they're not being overburdened and burned out by just sitting the stand. That was also in there. And do you guys have any questions for me?
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. Commissioner Walters?
So you said they're going to be sitting on a stand.
Mm-hmm.
Are they always going to be supervised, or do you anticipate after these, you know, the four nine-hour shifts and the two shadowing shifts each, that then they will be sitting on the stand alone?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, after they go through the mentorship program of, you know, the shadowing, a lifeguard in the stand, shadowing supervisor doing ride-along, they would be released to work their shifts as a lifeguard in the stand.
And that's provided that they satisfactorily go through. There's no guarantee. There's, they have to satisfy Captain Moats that they're able to be, one, left alone, and, two, that they can continue at all.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Well, I know that we have in the past used younger than 18, and I know that's a great benefit for our local children. What is the minimum age recognized by the United States Lifeguarding Association?
16 years of age.
It is.
And so I can point out several agencies that hire 16-year-olds.
I thought theirs was 18.
I'm sorry?
I thought theirs was 18.
USLA? No, it's 16. And so, you know, Kildaloo Hills hires 16-year-olds. They're certified by the USLA. Virginia Beach, certified from the USLA. Duck, Surf Rescue hires 16-year-olds, you know, certified agency by USLA. So, and I can go on and on.
Do you know how many 16-year-olds Kildaloo Hills has been using typically?
I don't know their exact numbers year to year. I know that they recruit significantly from high school-aged kids. You know, the other hopefulness in this is that we have longer longevity of employees as well, if we can get them when they're 16, 17, and they can continue to work, you know, through their college years, that we'll have more experienced lifeguards in the long run.
Would there be, I understand that the expectation is that by lowering that age, we're looking at kids who are in the community and at home. Would there be a specific restriction that they had to be local residents to keep somebody from moving in at that age?
There is no restriction in the proposed proposal, no. I would think that would be difficult to accomplish, but there's no restriction, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Walters?
Well, I just have some concerns that I'd like to share, and I, you know, I fully support apprenticeship programs, and we saw evidence of their success today with COA. However, those students are supervised constantly. And I have a daughter who was a lifeguard. She worked at the beach club when she was 16, 17, and then worked for KDH when she was 18. I was trying to do some research about just, you know, the teenage brain, basically. And, you know, I mean, their frontal lobe doesn't really develop until, you know, into their 20s. And I have, I just have grave concerns about 16- or 17-year-olds being on a stand by themselves. I know you, they could find no better mentor. However, and I'll read, I mean, there's a ton of research out there on teenage brains, but it doesn't matter how smart they are. Good judgment isn't something they can excel at. The rational part of a teen's brain isn't fully developed and won't be until 25 or so. I know there are exceptional teens, don't get me wrong, but that frontal area is what controls reasoning, helps us think before we act. And some of the things are, that are included in that are the executive functions of complex decision-making, planning skills, impulse control, emotional reactions, focusing attention, prioritizing competing information, received all at once, and the ability to ignore external distractions. And I think of a rip current, and you have multiple people caught in it, and you're expecting a 16- or 17-year-old to address it quickly, get on the radio, say exactly what needs to happen. And while I understand what our need is, I would, while they would be more capable than me ever, I think putting, you know, other children's lives and other adults' lives in the hands of 16- and 17-year-olds is risky. I think it's risky for the people you're trying to save, and I think it's also risky for the person, the 16- or 17-year-old, who realizes that, oh, gosh, I was supposed to save somebody, and they just drown. And so, but those are my concerns. I believe in apprenticeships, but in this situation where they're not constantly supervised like they are in a typical apprenticeship program, even something as dangerous as welding or those kind of things, they are supervised, and I, it concerns me. It just concerns me.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner, forward.
I have nothing.
Okay. Chad, any response to some of those concerns?
I think those concerns can be applied to, you know, as you said, any age up to 25, and that's our staff, is that right now, 18 to 25 age group.
I understand.
And, yeah, so it can be applied to that full range. You know, I, my background, I went to school to be a teacher. I'm well adept with the high school age. My wife's a high school teacher, and understand that there's a wide range of maturity from, you know, that whole age group, and so you might have a 16-, 17-year-old that is mature beyond their age, and you might have a 25-year-old that's un-mature beyond their age. And I think we run, while they're not supervised the entire time, our program is designed that there is supervision, and there's mentorship, and there's leadership. And so anytime that a guard from the stand, you know, is involved in a rescue or a situation, there is compounding backup from, you know, the Ocean Rescue Service, from, you know, lifeguard on ATV, to the supervisor, to the captain, compounded by the Fire Department, compounded by the EMS Division and Police Division. So I understand it is a large responsibility, and there are, I think there are some 16-, 17-year-olds that are ready for that. We've got a lot of experienced young individuals in our community that spend a lot of time in the water, that are adept, more adept with the conditions than somebody from Pennsylvania, for example, that, you know, are active surfers, are part of the swim team, they go to the beach, they've grown up at the beach. So, and trust me, I, I realize the, your concerns, and that it may not be perfect for everyone. Again, this is a pilot program that I've brought to you guys to try to address some issues that I'm trying to deal with.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner, please.
I have a concern about the age, and it's based on town history from age requirements from some time ago. That causes me a great deal of concern, especially when you get into the legalities of dealing with risk management and so forth. That does cause me a great, and the other thing is, if it's a pilot program, we're trying to recruit local students, are we sure that we want to be bringing 16-, 17-year-olds from out of the area into here? If we want to do it, shouldn't we be limiting it to local and not encouraging 16-year-olds to come to the beach and assume a lot of responsibility away from their parental controls?
Sure. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes?
I'll just make one, and I don't know how relevant it is, but, you know, my, my experience in working with, you know, teens and everything goes back to some, you know, some substitute teaching, but it also comes from a grocery store perspective, where it's a first job for a lot of young people. And, you know, the labor laws are so restrictive. I mean, you can't have a 16- or 17-year-old in your deli. They can't even push the button on the baler, you know, which is, means you just push the button, and the door closes, and it smashes the boxes. I mean, there are just so many restrictions out there, but those are not life-or-death things. This is, this is life and death, and that's, that's just the big fear.
All right. Thank you. I, I think it's time for a motion, but I hear a lot, I hear a lot of concern, but I think what I should say is if we can get a motion here, we do, we do have this proposal. It has been thoughtfully developed and presented, and I think that while I hear the concerns, I think it would be appropriate to give it the consideration that, as a board, that they have given it, and so I think I am going to ask for a motion on this to approve or deny this.
Before motion, I have one clarification, because I thought I heard something earlier. Then I just heard something questioned, and that is, have we checked with our insurance company, and that all of this has been satisfied by our insurance company?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I thought I heard.
Do we have that in writing?
Yes. I believe we do.
Okay. All right. So if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal as presented.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Would the motion to accept a friendly amendment before I second it? Which is limited Dare County only.
If we can do it, but I would, I would expand it to Dare and Kurutuck at least.
You can impose such a limitation, a regional limitation on where you would accept these interns from.
That would be their place of residence.
Okay. Would you, did you accept that?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I'll second your motion for discussion.
Okay. So the, so the motion, as we have it on the floor, with the friendly amendment, is to approve the recommendation with the condition that the applicants would only be accepted from Dare and Kurutuck counties, Dare and Kurutuck places of residence.
And that being because if housing is such a big deal, and we want a pilot program to talk about housing, do you need competing people for housing at that age, you know, on their own? But I have grave concerns about this program and those ages. I am concerned about the level of supervision and the level of instantaneous decision-making in a crowded beach.
Thank you.
And I don't care what your risk management is telling you right now, they're not going to back you up in any heartbeat at all. Seen it, been there.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, discussion? So we have a motion on the floor for approval with additional conditions of Dare and Kurutuck County as places of residence. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Sorry?
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I'm willing to give them enough rope to hang themselves.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is item H6, Amendments to the Traffic Control Map. Cliff?
Yes, sir. We got this in two parts, two amendments that were requesting to the traffic control map. I'll start with A. We're asking the board, or recommending asking the board to approve a no parking tollway zone designation for the west side of Virginia Dare Trail. This is on the screen in front of you, highlighted in yellow. It's 7200 to 7218, which takes it from the southern end of Greagle Street to just past the roadway end at 7218. The, you've got, the reason, part of the reason for this is you've got some, you've got a business, you've got two businesses there. There's a crosswalk. It's kind of hard to see. It's right where the cursor is, but if cars are parked in the right-of-way here, it makes pedestrians that are coming from Fat Boys Restaurant or any of these houses that we're trying to get them to a crosswalk to safely cross, they could be dodging in and around cars that are parked in the right-of-way here. So that's why we're making that request, or this request.
I need to disclose that I have one of the affected properties in here, just for clarity's sake.
Understood.
7212 is the site of the property.
Been there so long.
Well, I had to stop and think, because one's developed, one's not, but...
Oh, yeah.
There is new construction, but just as a point of clarification, this area at night is extremely busy. It's not super well-lit, and there's an awful amount of foot traffic from the pier to Fat Boys and so forth, and cars parking in the right-of-way totally impede the pedestrian traffic. And we also have a handicapped resident that uses that roadway every night to go back and forth, just...
I know this is an area where, in the discussions, in the focus discussions, we really wanted to emphasize pedestrian activity, and that means making that safe pedestrian activity. And I fully understand, without regard to who owns what where, that cars parked in the right-of-way there are creating a hazard with people, when people need to step out between them, and just all kinds of forcing people to step into the travel lane to get around. It's just not good.
Well, it's a crazy, busy place. It isn't well-lit, although I must admit that I love the demonstration light that was there for the crosswalk last year to help people cross. But there's a driveway, two driveways right there where the crosswalk is, and anybody that blocks that, people are going to be out in the road, and cars don't like to stop at the crosswalk anyway. That they should.
Commissioner, any further observations or questions about that? Okay. Cliff, is there a second part to this?
Well, that, I think, would need to be a separate motion from the second.
Okay. All right. So then a motion would be in order for item 6A, the no parking tollway designation for the west side, 7200 to 7218 South Virginia Dare Trail. Is there a motion?
So moved. Sorry.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And I will add at this point, I hope when we get to CIP discussion, that there are some lights, that we do factor in some lights.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item then is 6B, no parking tollway zone designation at the town and beach sound accesses, which was a topic of discussion earlier.
And just for a little bit more on that, Deputy Chief Hale pulled the, just so the boards are aware, the number of tickets that have been written, no parking tickets, 17 in 2018 and 6 in 2017. So we don't do this a lot, but the, this is more for consistency's sake than anything else. What the officers do struggle with is if there is an issue, and they do respond, and sometimes they have to get out and look for the sign to find out what time the no parking kicks in, whether it's, again, 9, 9, 10, 11, whenever it may be. What this ordinance does is it allows, it consistently marks each public beach and sound access... marks each public beach and sound access with no parking from twelve AM until six AM. The, and, and the concern, one of the concerns that John Cece, Mr. Cece brought up, we can, we can tackle a lot of those for the NEST volunteers that he's aware of, but there could be a time where someone gets a parking ticket for doing something that he mentioned, and short of them telling us and making us aware of that, I'm not sure how else we would know.
They would have to come to the town, because it's not a clerk of court, and there's your time to talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, for those that just pay it, we'll never know, but those who question it and want to plead their case, then we'll deal with that.
It seems reasonable to me. I mean, we have to have some kind of rule with some kind of hours to have the kind of control that we want.
But this would, if you approve, would override all existing and, and make everything consistent.
Makes sense. Yes, Commissioner Walters?
I just wanted to say, I did have an opportunity to talk to John Cece, and all the volunteers do still have the permit. They have to have a permit, so that takes care of a lot, right there.
Right, yes, Commissioner Fuller.
Point of clarification, I think, you said something earlier, and I just want to make sure that it's true. This is a town citation, so my understanding, the money comes to the town, it does not go to the Board of Education.
It, this money is, correct me if I'm wrong, but this money would be paid to the town and remitted to the Board of Education.
Yeah, fines and forfeitures.
This is not a fine or forfeiture, this is a town citation, and I just would like to validate, not that it's a big deal, but a town citation, in my understanding, is something that goes to the revenue stream of the town. It is not something that go, like, if we issue a state citation or speeding, surely that goes, but this is a town ordinance. This is a town ordinance, and town ordinance monies, I don't think go to the state.
You may, I'm going to.
I mean, to the Board of Education.
You may be correct, that needs, I'm going to need, for the finance officer to pick which one of us is right.
I, I'd have to research it, but it's my impression that any type of fine or forfeiture accrues to the Board of Education. Includes parking fines paid to the university.
But these are ordinances.
Understand.
These aren't, these aren't state-issued, I just.
Yeah, but I.
Think it, would, I'd like, just a clarification on that.
We, we can look into that, and, because I, I've only dealt with this in other contexts, but I, I can look at that and let you know.
All right, thank you. All right, having heard that, is there a motion to approve the no parking zone tollway for all town, beach, and sound accesses?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you. And our last item and new business, we're going to add, we have added an item seven, which was item five, from the consent agenda, which is consideration of modifications to the consolidated fee schedule. So that is E five. And so Commissioner Fuller, I'll ask you to speak to this, if you would, please.
And, and I appreciate your indulgence, but I just had a couple of questions about this, and it really concerns, and maybe the deputy chief can respond to this, but the consolidated fee schedule that's being requested by the fire department is applied only to commercial, correct, not to homes, that you're asking about the fee schedule.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then particularly, would like to know how you came up with the proposed numbers, specifically the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the flow test for the fire sprinkler system.
Sure, so the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, of course, that flow test is a requirement, actually, it's an NPA requirement based upon the fire code, to do a flow test before you actually can design a sprinkler system or design an upgrade to a sprinkler system. When you do that flow test, it takes a minimum of two people, it's a two-hydrant flow test, you have to put a gauge on one, and you have to actually flow another at its capacity, because what they have to have is a total capacity of that hydrant system, not just what that one hydrant will do, so that's why it takes the two hydrants flowing water for probably a minute or so, which could result in anywhere from a thousand to three thousand gallons of water. So there's a water use, water usage, there's a staff time that's there. The other thing that I did was I looked out to some other municipalities, and I found fees and charges anywhere from a hun, a hundred-and-seventy dollars, all the way up to eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars for one city. So the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and, and part of this is a cleanup on our side, at, at some point, and I don't know where this fee came from, but the fire department was using a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee, but when I started researching, I couldn't find where it was in our consolidated fee schedule. So it's, it's almost as much as you will, a cleanup, and I don't know if it got lost in translation at some point, or what had happened, but.
So something we've been doing anyway.
Unfortunately, yes, sir.
It just hadn't been in the schedule.
Not on a regular basis, but, yes, sir.
Till we get it back in the schedule.
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else, sir?
Uh, no, no, satisfied, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that question satisfied, then, can we approve this item of the consolidated fee schedule?
So moved.
Okay, motion is there? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consolidated fee schedule? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We are at eleven-fifty. I'll try to get through a couple of other items here. We're probably going to need another break, because we've got a couple of resolutions to read, and, and then we're going to go to closed session anyway, so, so let's get through any items from the town attorney.
I do have one thing, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just update the, the board on the status of the Richardson litigation. That's the case that involved the town's taking of a beach nourishment easement and the owner's efforts to obtain substantial compensation for that easement. Of course, the, the case was tried about eighteen months ago. The matter has been on appeal to the Court of Appeals, which affirmed in part and reversed in part. We have appealed to the Supreme Court of North Carolina, asking that the court reinstate the original judgment that the court, trial court entered, which would have reduced the recovery to zero or three-hundred-and-thirty dollars without ordering a new trial. After we noted our appeal, the owners sought discretionary review of additional issues. The Supreme Court has not yet informed the parties whether it's going to accept those additional issues. There has not been an argument date set yet, although all of the briefing has been completed, so we're now waiting for the court to notify the parties as to what the issues will be, that they will be considering, whether it will be limited to the appeal that we took, or if it will include some of the other issues that, that they have been asked to review in their discretion. Once we, once we hear from the court on that, we can expect that they would then schedule the oral arguments in the case, but that's where we are right now. I just wanted to, to brief you all on, on the status of that.
Thank you. Any questions from, from commissioners? Thank you. So that brings us to item J one, the multi-year town fireworks contract.
Yes, sir, this is one I'm, I'm very glad to bring before you, something I, I think is good for the town, it's something I'm, I'm glad to finally have before you. I want to thank the finance officer and Deputy Fire Chief for, for helping get this done, and what it is, we're asking you to, to lock in at a price specific for the next three years for our fireworks show. This secures the fireworks show on July the fourteenth for the next three consecutive years at a price of twenty-five-thousand dollars for each show. So I'm glad that we get July fourth set, because there's nothing worse than a July fourth fireworks show on July fifth. And I'm glad about the price, I think it locks that in, that, that's a price which is right in line with what we've been paying historically. If the board's agreeable to this, I'd ask that you allow, authorize me to sign this. There's two things that the attorney needs to feel better about before we sign it as is, and that's, in the contract, there's some language on indemnification, and as well as some inconsistent Florida law that doesn't apply. I'd, I'd ask the board to, once the attorney has those two areas to his liking, that we could then, you could make the, the approval contingent upon that.
So a motion would be in order to approve this, subject to modifications on indemnification and removing the Florida law references by the attorney. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm going to give my standard thing. Why can't we work out a deal with Manio and have a barge in the sound?
I will, I will consult with the new town manager and see.
Or the mayor's can talk, can say what's, you know, but it'd be nice to have, we'd have a really big show.
We'd have a big show, we have a big show.
And we'd ease traffic congestion, because it would be more strung out.
Have people watch it from their boats.
Yep.
Had to go there.
Yeah. I will, I will broach that with the mayor.
Just to.
See what he says.
There's new board members on both sides, so it might be an opportune time.
Okay, thank you, at least on a pilot basis, anyway. All right, thank you. So we, I believe we have the motion and a second, however, and taking that advice as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. And then one more item before we go to break. This is from the board retreat. These are changes to the trash recycle schedule, recycling contract, and the applicable budget amendment.
Yes, sir, this board is well-aware and has been discussing this for quite some time now, and put a lot of thought, energy, and effort into these decisions, and a lot of time was put into this during the board's January retreat. The, unfortunately, we only, after two submittals or two attempts, we received one request, or, excuse me, one bid for recycling contract, and it is from Outer Banks Hauling. It is at an increased price, however, it, it adds a second day of recycling pickup to the beach road. What it does is, it allows the blue route to be picked up recycling during the summer season, May to October, on Monday and Friday, the same two days, the town will pick up trash during that time. And actually, the, oh, I'll get to this, but the, so that's, that's what the contract would be for Outer Banks Hauling that we're asking for the board to approve. In your packet, you have a budget amendment. This contract would become effective this, the service would begin this May, payments would begin this May, so we have to have a budget adjustment to get us through the last two months of this fiscal year, but the total price for this contract is one-hundred-ninety-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty dollars, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty dollars is for the curbside portion of that, and the remaining seventy-five-hundred dollars is for pickup at beach accesses and town drop-off areas. In addition to this, there is also a, the town historically has not had to pay a tip and fee for the items that we carry, Tatterbanks Hauling, from the west side, as well as the off-season on the, on the, on the other routes. We're going to have to start paying seventy dollars per ton for Outer Banks Hauling to process those, and we estimate that to be as high as a cost of thirty-five-thousand dollars. So the, the contract and the budget amendment is here for your approval. The, the other parts of the route that I'd like to mention that we're proposing as a change, the, the green route, which is all areas of the west side, well, let me start to do this this way, the green route would stay the same, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Tuesdays would be trash, Wednesdays would be recycling. We're, we're recommending to you that we add the west side of the village, which has been on the red route, to be a part of the green route, and the, the west side of the village would be picked up on, trash on Tuesdays, recycling on Wednesdays. The red route would add the areas north of Bainbridge Street, which is the houses on Memorial and Wrightsville, and, and the side streets in between, would pick up trash on Tuesdays and Saturdays, and recycling on Wednesdays. Did I say that right? Okay, and the Cove would stay in the position that it's in now, on that same red rack route schedule. The, the, I've said it, but again, on, on the beach road, I do think it's important to note that, that year-round, we're going to pick up trash on Mondays and Fridays. I think this will be a benefit, easier for everyone to understand, for our property managers that have to try and help us educate the visitors, that your recycling and your trash are both picked up on Monday and Friday. That's something we've wanted to get consistent for a while, and based on the numbers and the data that we've provided you previously, I think we will see an increase in the recycling on the beach road, which will, it, it helps, I can't emphasize this as being a huge help because, but it will help offset some of those tip and fees that we have to pay, because for every ton that goes to recycling, it's still a little bit less than if it goes in the landfill. I'm not sure what else there is to add. The, part of the reason we're, we're recommending you move from the village to in-between the roads, or Memorial and Wrightsville, is that when we looked at the number of housed, single-family dwellings in each, the village, the Cove, and there is north of Bainbridge, there's a higher number of houses, there's a greater number of rentals in, in those areas, and we just, we think we're going to be more effective, more efficient, and create a, a better use of our resources by encompassing that area. But I, I do, I know we're going to have to keep an eye on the village by dropping to this day, and we'll do that, and we'll, we'll commit to evaluating that. If we made a mistake, we'll come back and tell you we made a mistake. This is what we propose to you.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Renee?
Just one. ABC Recycling, who picks that up?
It's a mix. It, it depends on the business. Some, I think still, some carry it to the county themselves, the county picks up some, and we pick up some.
And we take it to Stumpy Point?
We take it to, well, no, we take it over to, to Manio, to the, to the crusher.
So we don't pay anything for the?
No.
Okay.
No, the, the, the glass, the county's glass crusher is over at their public works yard on Driftwood, and that's where we take that.
Okay. So the more glass we can get out of the, even the recycling stream and take it to the crusher, the better off we are?
Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Walters.
I'm fine.
I'm fine. Okay, yep, I, I agree, I like, I like this plan. I, I hope we have made the right decision, I feel like we have. Feel pretty good about it, so.
We're looking for a motion to approve the Outer Banks Hauling contract with the associated budget adjustment.
Okay, thank you, then a motion would be in order.
So, so moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the contract and the associated budget adjustment. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, with that, we will.
Can I?
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Clarification for, for staff is, we, we talked about, I think this is the third or the fourth time we're going to change stickers on trash cans, and we probably have about ten thousand of those now to go and change. We had talked about trying to place a QR code, which would work for some, but maybe not for all, but, you know, you've got to believe that at least somebody in the house has a, a smartphone, that they can read that QR code. My question is, do you, which would you rather have? Would you rather have the sticker with the, the days and the times, or the QR code?
Are we going to do something with the property management companies, too? Will they receive a flyer or something, go on the fridge, or whatever?
We will do all we can, and we'll put a full court press on this to try and get the word out. The, the, if we, if we do the stickers with the dates, I'm not sure we need the QR code. If we just do the QR code, the, what that gives us is, if we change this schedule again, we don't have to change the stickers. All we have to do is go in and, and wherever that QR code is linked to, to change that information. All we have to do is go in and wherever that QR code is linked to, to change that information. But this is something I need the board to tell me what to do.
Are you planning on taking off the old stickers?
Yes, ma'am.
If you do a QR code?
Yeah, so you have to visit them anyway, right?
I'm just, don't want different information out.
I think the QR code is certainly the most cost-effective way to go for the long term, because you can change it internally if you need to, without restickering every can, understanding this year's gonna be somewhat labor-intensive to remove. And if you're going to do a flyer for all of the property managers, I mean, that QR code can just be right there on the flyer, too, so they don't have to go out, you know, to the can. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah. Commissioner Fuller?
I'm fine.
So do I hear the QR code without, or just QR code?
Just QR code. The, it should, the sticker should read, "For schedules and additional information to check this." I mean-
Yeah, and that-
And the web address.
And the web address.
Right. The neat thing about that QR code is the other information we may be able to share.
Yes.
Like motels on the beach and-
And what can and cannot be recycled.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
As long as you tell people, Town and Axhead QR code information.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, let's take a break. Let's take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Okay, the board will come back to order, and we are now to the Board of Commissioners' agenda, and I'll start to my left with Mr. Cohn.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to present for the board's consideration, request to apply for the LDPI grant. Each town is allotted $10,000 in the Gov. Ed. budget to do programming of some sort or equipment. This year, Roberta, excuse me, Roberta has indicated that we need to have some new screenage that would be more customer-friendly in this boardroom. It's a two-year grant. We would apply two separate years. The first year would be the piece of equipment you see for this year. Then next year, we would come back and apply for some more. It's a max of $10,000 a year. It is not a matching grant. It is a $10,000 grant. And it's for a 98-inch display to replace the screen that we're currently using.
Right. Okay. Any questions before we consider that action? All right, in that case, a motion to apply for the Gov. Ed. grant?
I would make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you for bringing that to us. I know a lot of facilities are switching to the large screens. They're so much clearer and readable. It's just, give you a lot of advantages.
Anything else for me?
Nothing for me, thank you. Excuse me.
Commissioner Walters? Commissioner Fuller? Okay, great. Thank you. That brings us to the mayor's agenda. The first item is a resolution in support of naming the Oregon Inlet Bridge to honor former Senator and President Pro Tem of the North Carolina Senate, Mark Bassnight. I understand where we are in the process, and that this is after failed action Monday, that this is in the hands of the state for naming. But I offer this in part as a statement of appreciation, regardless, for Senator Bassnight, all that he did for this community and many others when he was in office, and simply that. And if it is weighed by the state, we would be grateful for that. So this is a resolution recommending the new replacement bridge for the Bonner Bridge be known as the Mark Bassnight Bridge, whereas the town of Naggshead is an incorporated municipality in Dare County, North Carolina, and whereas Mark Bassnight was born in Manio and graduated from Manio High School, and whereas Mark Bassnight chaired the Dare County Tourist Bureau from 1974 to 1976, and whereas Mark Bassnight was a member of the North Carolina Board of Transportation from 1977 to 1983, and whereas Mark Bassnight served as a Democratic member of the North Carolina State Senate, representing the first district from 1984 until 2011, and whereas Senator Mark Bassnight held the position of President Pro Tem from 1993 until his resignation due to health issues, and whereas Senator Mark Bassnight advocated for the replacement of Bonner Bridge, the vital lifeline to Hatteras Island, and whereas Mark Bassnight has made extraordinary contributions to the growth and strength of all of Dare County in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas Mark Bassnight was a lifelong resident of Dare County who contributed to the economic and cultural history of the county. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Naggshead Board of Commissioners respectfully request your consideration that the new bridge in Dare County be named the Mark Bassnight Bridge, adopted the sixth day of February 2019. Having heard that resolution, a motion would be in order?
Mayor, a motion to approve with one correction in the last, whereas-
Of course.
Whereas Mark Bassnight is a lifelong resident.
Thank you very much. He is indeed. Thank you. Any other comments?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. The next item is a resolution in favor of active routes to school program. I offer this, I am, you've seen this. I'm not going to read this one into the record. I will say of this one that I, as you know, I'm a, I'm a favor of alternative means of transportation and spend a lot of time on my bike. And the one school that we do have in the community has a very active walking and cycling and skateboarding group of parents and children. Those are the kinds of activities, I think, as a community, that we would like to endorse and encourage, and that the state should continue to and support efforts in favor of creating and maintaining those kinds of routes in ours and all communities. So I offer this resolution in favor of continuing to support that program.
Did you make the motion?
I did not. A motion would be in order.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to support continued funding for the active routes to school program. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. The third item under my agenda is authorization, that we keep having to do this, is to send a letter, you know, when I, when I think of us having to do this, no one is opposed to reasonable, rationally-based cost for insurance, but what we keep getting are, for us, things that are not represented by the, by the actual cost. And there's, they put these big numbers out without rational, seemingly without rationality to them. So any observations from the board about this? So this would authorize me to forward a letter to the Insurance Commissioner in opposition to the most recent rate bureau increase, for mostly the same reasons that we've done it in the past. So a motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Before we go to the closed session, there is one more thing that was not on the agenda. I would ask the board's indulgence, is we're all aware that Walter Jones is in poor health, and with the board's approval, I would like to send a letter to Congressman Jones to express his support for the things that he has done for the town. I know that when we've been to Washington on various issues, offshore oil drilling, helped with trying to get our CAMA funding, he is, his door has always been open. His staff has always been supportive, and I'd like to express our appreciation to them.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. That brings us to the request for a closed session, to consider closed session minutes. And I believe that we want to add to this some discussion of the event site.
It's on there.
Okay, thank you. I'm not looking at the most current one, so I apologize for that. Yep. So a motion would be in order?
Mayor, I make a motion that we go into closed session in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A1 and General Statute 143-318.11A5, closed session minutes, and the Outer Banks event site.
Thank you. Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Will be in closed session. The board has returned to open session, and I'll ask Attorney Leidy to please report out from closed session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The board did approve the closed session minutes as presented, and also took action to open certain closed session minutes, and also gave instructions to the town's negotiating agents, but no other actions were taken.
Okay, thank you. Any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.